Oh, just give it, there we are. Great, good afternoon, everyone. Hi, I am Liz Krueger, Chair of the State Senate Finance Committee, and I am announcing that we are starting Budget Hearing Number Two for today, the Workforce Budget Hearing. It's the joint legislative hearing of the State Senate Finance Committee and the Assembly Ways and Means Committee. Today, for people who keep track, this is the fifth of 13 hearings conducted jointly by the fiscal committees of the legislature on the governor's specific proposed budget for state fiscal year 2024-25. These hearings are conducted pursuant to the New York State Constitution and legislative law. Today, the Senate Finance Committee and the Assembly Ways and Means Committee will hear testimony concerning the governor's proposed budget for the State Department of Labor, the State Department of Civil Services, and the State Governor's Office of Employee Relations. Following each testimony, or the panel, complete panel's testimony, there will be time for questions from the chairs of the relevant committees and other members of the relevant committees. I will now introduce from the Senate and Assembly Member Harry Bronson, Chair of the, brand-new Chair of the Assembly Labor Committee, and serving today also in the role of Chair of Ways and Means in the absence of Faleen Weinstein. So he will introduce members of the Assembly after I introduce members of the Senate. I'm also joined by Senator Tom O'Mara, the ranking member of the Senate Finance Committee, and we will be introducing our Senate colleagues. I see Senator Ramos, Senator Robert Jackson. And Tom, would you like to introduce your members of your party?
Yes, we have on our side our ranker on civil service, Senator Alexis Wyke, Senators George Borello and Mario Mataro.
Thank you. And now Senator Harry Bronson, Senator, look at that, okay.
I don't want that promotion, by the way.
All right. How about brand-new Labor Chair, Assembly Member Harry Bronson?
Now, that is music to my ears. So I'm glad to be with you, Chair Krueger. Happy to be joined by Chair of Government Employees, Stacy Faferramato, also Assembly Member Joanne Simon and Assembly Member Billy Jones.
Great, thank you. And we have three panelists here before us. Commissioner?
Can I have a break?
Oh, I'm sorry, Assembly Member Roth, excuse me.
No problem, thank you. We are joined by Mr. Di Stefano, who is the ranker on government employees, as well as Assembly Members Slater, Derso, and Jody Iglio.
Thank you very much. I didn't mean to leave you out of this, I apologize. And of course, I didn't actually mention that Senator Ramos is our Chair of Labor and Senator Jackson is our Chair of Civil Service. So glad that they're both here with us.
Don't forget pensions, both.
And our pensions.
Oh, I didn't see it on my notes, thank you. Most important, everyone's pensions, thank you.
Everybody likes that one.
Thank you. I'm going to start with Commissioner Riordan from the Department of Labor, then we're going to go to Commissioner Hoag's Department of Civil Service, and then Michael Vollfort, Director of the State Governor's Office Employee Relations. Just to remind everyone, you each have 10 minutes to present. If your testimony is longer, we all have copies of it. We recommend just bullet-pointing your most important issues. And then the chairs have 10 minutes to ask and answer questions. The rankers have five minutes. Everyone else has three minutes. And there are clocks everywhere to keep track of the time. So with that, Commissioner Riordan, good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the chairs. Krueger and Weinstein, thank you for inviting me to testify today. Distinguished members of the committees, thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide an update on our efforts at the Department of Labor. I am Alberta Riordan, New York State Commissioner of Labor. Over the last year, I have been able to dedicate more time to meeting one-on-one with many of my partners in government. It's been incredibly rewarding, and I'm really looking forward to continuing these conversations in the future. These one-on-one discussions include meetings with our esteemed labor chairs, Senators Ramos and Assembly Member Bronson. It's clear you both have such a genuine passion for labor and a tireless pursuit for justice and fairness in New York's workforce, and it's a passion that we share. Congratulations to my friend Harry for his new role. I'm very happy to have my friend and colleague serving as the Chair of Labor in the Assembly. As I testify before you today, I am reminded of the profound transformations that have unfolded during my time as Commissioner. The world around us has undergone significant changes, and so too has the DOL, constantly adapting to meet these evolving challenges. With that in mind, I'd like to take the opportunity to reintroduce who we are and what we do for the people of the state of New York. The DOL is an agency operating with greater efficiency and unity than ever before. We're not just a collection of divisions with varied responsibilities. We are a unified entity driven by a singular mission, and that is to serve the people of New York. We are interconnected and collaboratively focused on serving workers, including helping young people safely enter the workforce, assisting businesses, and empowering New Yorkers in their pursuit of employment. Whether our customers are looking to receive unemployment assistance, pivot to a new career, enhance their skills, or need help recovering stolen wages, we are here to help. Everyone at the DOL has a role in our success, and by ensuring that our fellow New Yorkers thrive, we are helping to fuel our state's economic might. This is a moment of opportunity, and we continue to explore new innovative ways to improve the delivery of our wide spectrum of services. For instance, we now have virtual agents helping unemployment insurance customers get quick answers. Our virtual phone agent was launched just last July, and in that time, it has answered five and a half million questions. After authenticating, our customers can resolve a lot of account-specific issues through self-service, and it is truly a game changer. We continue to refine that tool's capabilities. As you know, we are also in the process of overhauling our antiquated 1970s UI mainframe with a new state-of-the-art system that will improve communications, resolve claims faster, and improve fraud detection, because we must continue to support this valuable social service system. We're making sure that businesses are paying their fair share. Last year, we reached an unprecedented settlement with rideshare giant Uber. The company agreed to make quarterly and retroactive payments into the state's unemployment insurance trust fund. New York is the first state in the nation to secure an agreement of this caliber with Uber. In worker protection, we continue to develop our multifaceted case management system that will ultimately allow New Yorkers to report labor violations, including wage theft, unemployment fraud, and more, online. We've also ramped up our efforts to combat child labor violations. According to our data from 2021 to 2023, there was a 290% increase in reported child labor violations statewide. Many of you have likely seen articles about this issue across the country. Now, more than ever, the increase in violations is due to public awareness and subsequent reporting. I thank Governor Hokel for helping us shine a light on this issue and lead an aggressive crackdown with the establishment of the state's Child Labor Task Force. As part of these efforts, we've also visited hundreds of businesses to ensure compliance, launched a child labor information hub on our website, and established the Protect Youth Workers pledge, which encourages employers to affirm they have educated their employees about labor rights and signs of labor trafficking. I thank the legislature for advocating for additional resources for worker protection. This division is such an important arm of our agency, and they are safeguarding our most precious workforce. With an ever-present focus on workplace equity, we released two important reports. One closely looking at the impact the pandemic had on the gender wage gap; the other, a first-of-its-kind study examining employment disparities among transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary New Yorkers. As Governor Hokel continues to spur economic growth in every part of our great state, we are doing our part to support businesses, small and large. We continue to gauge the needs and concerns of our business community through our annual surveys. We also spearheaded a small business tour, where we visited Utica, Troy, Buffalo, and Rochester to highlight state resources that can help these community cornerstones thrive in today's economy. This is in addition to the many services we offer to businesses, including workforce recruitment, consultations, hiring incentives, and so much more. With so much new economic activity happening right now, and more on the horizon, it is still very much a job-seeker market. And with over 200,000 positions in our statewide job bank, now is the perfect time to take advantage of career opportunities. Our career fairs, both in-person and virtual, continue to be popular among businesses and job seekers. These events showcase opportunities from across the economic spectrum, with positions in the communities where these job seekers live. We also continue to hold virtual workshops to help New Yorkers have every advantage possible in the job market, and we capitalized on the cutting-edge technology in the expansion of our Virtual Career Center, an online platform that helps New Yorkers accelerate their career search. We're using many of these tools as part of our ongoing effort to help asylum seekers gain work authorization and find jobs. These individuals certainly face some unique challenges, but we're up to the task. After all, the governor asks us to do what we do for all New Yorkers, and assisting asylum seekers affirms our mission to support a diverse and inclusive workforce statewide. I'd like to extend my deepest gratitude to Governor Hokel for entrusting us with additional resources and tools as part of her proposed budget. Her faith in our department empowers us to maximize the impact of every dollar, ensuring that we continue to effectively serve the workers and businesses of New York. For instance, the proposal to expand recovery tools for stolen wages would be a big win for our Worker Protection Division. This is a very dedicated team of people who have seen their responsibilities expand significantly over the years. Most recently, the expansion of the Workplace Violence Prevention Law to include elementary and secondary public education facilities added 4,400 more employers under the purview of this unit. Tools are vital in equipping these dedicated individuals to meet the evolving challenges in worker protection. I'd also like to thank the governor for supporting several other initiatives that align with our core mission. In the coming months, we will be working to expand our Registered Apprenticeship Program to incorporate younger students and our state agencies. We'll also be enhancing our Teacher Ambassador Program, establishing the Office of Workforce Data and Research, and developing a Youth Worker Bill of Rights. This administration made these proposals in response to concerns raised by you, and we look forward to your continued partnership in our efforts. This is a moment of transformation, where our commitment to adapt and lead change is paramount. Our focus is clear: to serve the people of New York with unwavering dedication and excellence. With the support of this budget, we are set to enhance our strategies and operations, ensuring that every decision and action aligns with our mission to support workers, businesses, and communities. I see the governor's budget proposal as more than a fiscal plan. It is an invitation to collaborate on a blueprint for a brighter, more equitable future for everyone statewide. We aim to transform these challenges into opportunities for growth and progress, while building a legacy of innovation, equity, and resilience, setting new benchmarks in public service for the betterment of all New Yorkers. Thank you.
To work, thank you. Let's go next, Commissioner Timothy Hoag.
Good afternoon.
No, you're good. Just turn yours off.
Oh, sorry.
Good afternoon, chairs and distinguished members of your respective committees. My name is Timothy Hoag, and I am pleased to serve as the Commissioner for the Department of Civil Service. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you to comment on Governor Hokel's executive budget for fiscal year 2025, as well as to highlight the exciting modernization initiatives the Department of Civil Service is undertaking. We continue to grapple with hiring challenges that differ from generations past. Over the past decade, the state workforce has been decreased by approximately 10%, leaving vacancies in thousands of positions responsible for providing critical services to New York state residences. To rebuild New York's public workforce, we are completely retooling the way we conduct our business here at Civil Service to modernize and remove barriers to employment for all job seekers. Top of mind for all the efforts we are undertaking is ensuring that diversity, inclusion, and equal opportunity are at the forefront of all statewide initiatives. We want to build a workforce that is reflective of the many faces, voices, backgrounds, and ideas of those we serve. And I believe the programs we are implementing will carry out Governor Hokel's vision and have a lasting impact on the makeup of the public service workforce for future generations. When I presented my budget testimony last year, the department was in the beginning stages of implementing the Hiring for Emergency Limited Placement Program, or HELP, at both the state and local levels to address workforce shortage and critical health and safety titles. These programs are addressing emergency staffing situations by allowing both the state and local agencies to more swiftly hire candidates that meet the minimum qualifications for these positions. I am pleased to report that the HELP program has been crucial in growing both the state and local workforce over the past nine months. To date, more than 7,000 individuals have been hired into health and safety positions through this program, helping to reduce the staffing shortages in these crucial roles. With that said, New York state agencies and localities continue to report chronic hiring difficulties in the post-COVID-19 labor market. At the state level, agencies are having a persistent recruitment challenge, and a shortage of candidates exists across all occupations. To assist with this issue, the department, at Governor Hokel's direction, is implementing an expanded program called the New York Hiring for Emergency Limited Placement statewide program, or NYHELPS. Through NYHELPS, which was recently approved by the Civil Service Commission, all state agencies will temporarily be authorized to make appointments to nearly any position typically filled on an open competitive basis. The expanded NYHELPS program will enable New York state agencies to fill critical vacancies more effectively and efficiently during the temporary period. I want you to know the department is very cognizant that local governments are struggling as well. And in fact, we have heard from many legislators and local government officials expressing their support for implementing NYHELPS in their districts. This is why we intend to submit a request to the Civil Service Commission at the February meeting to approve a local version of the NYHELPS program. While we are working to fully implement NYHELPS for a May 2024 launch, the department is also undertaking a review of college degree requirements for civil service titles, and will consider equivalent experience where appropriate, thereby removing additional barriers to entry to public service jobs. Public and private sector employees are resetting degree requirements as a part of a growing recognition of the value of work and life experience. We are hopeful that the reassessing degrees and requirements will help us in our efforts to reach job seekers in communities where going to college isn't always possible, but who have real-life work experience to contribute to the workforce. While this work is underway, the department will continue to carry out and implement the transformative initiatives proposed by Governor Hokel and adopted with your support as a part of last year's budget. We are building Team Civil Service, and we'll be establishing computer-based testing centers all across the state, where in-person exams will be held throughout the week to meet job seekers where they are. This paradigm shift will boost opportunities for all New Yorkers to participate in exams, including individuals who do not have a computer or internet access, making the Empire State more competitive with the private sector in our recruitment efforts. Further, we will promote the availability of thousands of public service careers through the career centers in government located at DOL career centers. We will also launch a public awareness campaign to promote in both English and Spanish the values of public service and the benefits and varied opportunities available as a New York state employee. Through this work, we will be embedded throughout communities across the state, which will enable us to further our work with community-based organizations to create awareness about the plethora of opportunities and benefits available in public service careers. As a part of Governor Hokel's ongoing commitment to building a strong public workforce, the department looks forward to working with our partners across state government to develop and offer new training focused on anti-racism in 2024. As we seek to recruit more diverse talent to the public sector, one of the key benefits we continue to highlight is the expansive plans we offer to New York state employees under the Health Program. As the administrator of NISHIP, which covers more than 1.2 million members, we are proud to ensure access to high-quality providers and services. We have recently reached a five-year agreement with Caroline for Empire Plan Behavioral Health Benefits. We believe this new agreement will allow us to expand our provider network and provide access to critical behavioral health benefits. In addition, I am pleased to report the department is expanding dental dependent coverage up to age 26, allowing dependents between the ages of 19 and 26 to remain covered without providing proof of student status. We will also work to promote the nation-leading Paid Parental Leave Program Governor Hokel has implemented for a majority of the state workforce, which provides 12 weeks of fully-paid leave for parents to spend caring for their newborn children, as well as implement the expansion of the Paid Family Leave Program to allow individuals 40 hours of paid leave for prenatal care. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to take the moment to extend my sincere appreciation to the staff that make up Team Civil Service. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. Together, this robust package I have highlighted will help us eliminate barriers to entry for civil service jobs, meet job seekers where they are, and create a pipeline of the next generation of diverse talent into the state workforce. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chair Krueger, Chair Weinstein, Chair Bronson, other respected chairs and honorable members of the Assembly and Senate. My name is Michael Vollforty, and I am the Director of the New York State Office of Employee Relations. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about Governor Hokel's executive budget proposal for fiscal year 2025 as it relates to our agency and the state workforce. The proposed budget continues Governor Hokel's commitment to streamlining hiring of state employees to ensure critical positions are filled. As Commissioner Hoag's mentioned, last year, Governor Hokel introduced the HELP program to streamline hiring of employees into healthcare and public safety titles. This year, the governor is building on that success by expanding that program. As part of efforts to make working for the state more attractive, our office worked with the unions and the Department of Civil Service to reduce the health insurance waiting period for new insurance to kick in at 28 days. This year's budget provides additional tools to ensure state government has the workforce it needs to deliver services to the public. The governor has proposed that our office negotiate the elimination of the longstanding lag and salary deferral programs for new hires, which have hindered New York's ability to compete in an ever-tightening job market. Additionally, as part of this year's coming executive budget, our office will lead a public awareness campaign to educate future and current state employees about the federal government's Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. Our effort will build upon legislation enacted by the legislature and signed by the governor in 2022 to make the program more accessible by setting a standard hourly threshold for full-time employment for these purposes, and clarifying key legal terms associated with the program. Our campaign will bolster the recruitment and retention of state employees by making sure they have knowledge of this valuable program and that agencies do their part by advertising the program and assisting employees in getting these valuable benefits. The governor has also directed the Department of Civil Service to identify and implement opportunities for experience-based hiring to supplement more traditional credential-based methods for hiring candidates. Consistent with the governor's state-of-the-state message and our requested budget, our office will take the lead on providing additional diversity, equity, and inclusion training for the state workforce to foster a work environment of inclusivity and continue to move New York forward as an employer of first choice. Over the past year, we successfully negotiated three new collective bargaining agreements. All of these agreements contain compensation increases in each year of the agreement and introduce cost-saving measures that preserve health benefits while helping to control the growth of costs borne by employees and the state. Negotiations continue with all of our other unions with expired agreements. Our approach in negotiations will remain consistent with the governor's message of being fair to employees and ensuring that state agencies are positioned to deliver outstanding services to New Yorkers. OER fields numerous inquiries every day from executive branch agencies. We routinely dispense advice on proper administration of our compensation and benefits packages, as well as advice on maximizing employee performance and operational flexibility under the terms of our negotiated agreements. We also continue work to ensure that all complaints of illegal discrimination and harassment are properly investigated and addressed. Executive branch agencies continue to administer their own telecommuting programs. Most still allow telecommuting up to several days per pay period, but require in-office presence the remainder of the pay period. Our guidance to agencies has been consistent: telecommuting programs must strike a balance between providing a convenience to employees on one hand and maintaining accountability and robust services for New Yorkers on the other hand. As you all know, our office administers a number of pre-tax benefit programs for state employees that save employees' pre-tax dollars for various eligible healthcare, dependent care, and transportation expenses. Last year, there were over 22,000 enrollments in these programs. We continue to make our pre-tax program even more attractive by allowing individuals to roll over unused funds for 2024 for the healthcare spending account and providing a grace period for our Dependent Care Advantage Account and Adoption Expenses Flexible Spending Accounts, where employees can use their 2023 balance during the first two and a half months of 2024 to incur new expenses and utilize previously deducted unused funds. We've also been able to fund increased employer contributions for the Dependent Care Advantage Account for the second year in a row. We also assist employees through our Labor Management Committees. These committees distributed over 10,000 job- and career-related tuition reimbursement benefits into last year and offer a Wellness New York Everyday Program. Our Employee Assistance Program had well over 20,000 contacts from employees last year seeking help. Lastly, through our Labor Management Committees, we continue to foster and develop the state's training and professional development programs. And in 2023, we offered training programs ranging from leadership skills to more technical topics such as writing skills, project management, investigative techniques, numerous information technology programs, and several direct care topics such as gender-affirming mental health care and behavioral therapy. With respect to training, in 2023, OER also prepared and deployed a cadre of over 300 trainers to deliver on the governor's commitment to in-person sexual harassment and workplace discrimination prevention training. Consistent with the governor's leadership on making New York a family-friendly employer, all the agreements we have reached so far have included Paid Parental Leave. This leave provides 12 weeks of leave at full pay for bonding with a child after the birth, adoption, or foster care placement. This benefit provides much-needed time for new parents to bond with new family members without having to make undue financial sacrifices. In sum, under Governor Hokel's leadership, our office is actively engaged in supportive programs that will ensure a robust, well-prepared executive branch workforce that all New Yorkers can rely upon. Thank you.
The first questioner will be Chair of Labor for the Senate, Senator Ramos.
Good afternoon. All right. Well, let's dig right in. Commissioner Riordan, do you feel that the DOL is acting in their full enforcement capacity with the current level of staffing?
So our issue with staffing is we cannot find enough people to come in and fill the lines that we have. We have, the agency has almost 500 open lines, and quite a few of them are in worker protection. And as my colleagues have said, it is a very difficult market now to bring people into state service, but we are trying very hard to do that. We were not really, you know, frankly, we were not hiring for a long time. One of the first things that Governor Hokel did- One of the first things that Governor Hochul did was get rid of the hiring freeze, which was like manna from heaven, frankly, and we all began scurrying around posting our jobs. That's when we discovered that the market had really changed, and it was really hard to get people to come into state service. And it's not just anybody. When worker protection, we need people with language ability. We need people with cultural competency. These are difficult jobs, going out in the public, facing an adversarial employer, often, and so, and they need a lot of training. I want to thank Civil Service for the opportunity to do registered apprenticeships in the state agencies, because we're going to look at inspectors and, you know, and our worker protection lines for those apprenticeships, because they need to be trained. But the fact is, we are down, so we are struggling to meet our responsibilities. We are using a tremendous amount of technology. They need new tools. And if you're, if, for all of us, if we're doing everything, if we're doing things the way we did 10 years ago, we're doing it wrong, because the world has changed. And we have turned our agency upside down, looking at, how do you do it now? What do you need? We reassigned people, we developed new lines, so people have a career path through worker protection.
Also, maybe reforming Tier Six when we get there, might incentivize people.
Out of, out of my purview, but...
...to consider civil service. Can you tell me, when the department collects penalties for wage and hour violations that are already not dedicated to a specific fund, how is that money typically used by the agency?
So, that is put into the, it's previously been put into the general fund. I'm not sure what's happening with it right now, but, you know, it's collected, and then it's part of the state treasury.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to wage theft. Now, the governor's proposal this year to combat wage theft allows you to issue a lien. Sounds a lot like my sweat bill. With your current staffing level, would the DOL have the capacity to handle the number of wage theft violations?
We will never have enough people to handle all of the wage theft violations that probably happen in the state of New York. The lien is going to be really, really important, not on the front end. It's going to be important getting the money back to the worker. We get a lot of investigations done through the investigative period, but when it comes to collecting that money, it is very hard, because we've had a lot of carrots and very few sticks. The governor has given us a very good stick.
That's a perfect segue to my follow-up, which is, what additional enforcement tools would you find useful?
The, the ability to levy would be transformational. We use that in the UI space, because the amount of delinquent money in UI is very low, because we have the levability, and they pay what they, what they owe. But in worker protection, we don't have that capacity. Now, also, I should say, in worker protection, there are other issues. They go bankrupt, they change the name of their company, they disappear into the shadows. So, there are a lot of issues. If people are working in the cash economy, very, very difficult. We don't have good records. The workers themselves are afraid to come forward. So, there are a lot of complications. The levy will help us tremendously. It is not a magic wand, but it will help us return money at a much better clip than we do now.
We certainly want that. I'm glad you mentioned worker protections. What responsibility do you believe an employer has in creating a safe work environment? Whose job is it to hold them to those responsibilities?
So, we have a lot of that responsibility, and we enforce that regularly. We do a lot of work with our business community proactively. Our business reps on the, on the workforce development side go out to individual places of work and work with those employers, explaining all kinds of things, what are your needs in hiring, but they also bring a whole list of the requirements that they need to follow to keep their workplace safe. Our, our workforce protection people also do that. I'm, you know, the overwhelming majority of employers in the state are trying to do the right thing. The unfortunate thing is, if you have a couple of bad apples in that barrel, they ruin it for everybody, because they're undercutting the fellow businesses, and they're making life difficult for those workers.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't pass labor laws just for the fun of it.
No, and I enforce them. Thank you.
And laws are only as good as they are enforced, so I hope we can work together on that in this budget cycle.
Absolutely.
Now, despite a rise in long COVID and high rates of worker injury in New York's largest employment sectors, workers are not taking the necessary time to recover because the TDI benefits are too low. They can't live off of $170 a week, which has been true since 1989, let alone focus on their recovery. And this year, the governor proposes a gradual increase to 67% of their paycheck cap by 2029, which is not soon enough. How is an injured worker in New York in 2025, next year, supposed to recover and pay their bills off of, off of a $280 a week check?
So, I'm very happy that it's going to go up, but of course, you know, I don't comment on proposed legislation. I just enforce it when it's passed and signed. Happy to do it.
Okay. Well, last year, we worked on raising the minimum wage, and the deal made under the former governor entrenched a lower minimum wage upstate than downstate. Do you feel the same work done upstate has lesser value than the same work done downstate?
I don't think it's about lesser value. I do believe when that was done with the support of, obviously, of the legislature, that it was a recognition that there are different economies in different parts of the state. It is the current law, and even with increases, there will always be, until you change it, bifurcated minimum wage standard.
Okay. Well, I have time for more, so I want to move on to frequency of pay, which is also a proposal we saw in the governor's executive budget. With the governor's proposal regarding the frequency of pay and liquidated damages, she's looking to bring clarity to the conflicting stances of the First and Second Departments on the Vega decision. Why is the governor choosing the interpretation that hurts manual laborers? You know, in New York State, people who work with their hands have to be paid every week, but now the governor wants that to change to every two weeks.
The change that she's asking for is to remove the incentive for these class-action lawyers to chase these cases. And the incentive is that currently, they are paid 100% of what they would have been, they, they make double what they would have made, and it's a huge windfall for the lawyer that gets this case. What their, the change is that, that incentive is removed, and so, there's far less reason for anyone to pursue these cases, because there's not that kind of money at the end of that trial. You know, the, the issue of, of being paid once a week, I mean, sorry, once a week or once every other week, is, is not, it's actually not the issue that people are suing about. They're doing it because there's a huge windfall of money.
All right. I'm going to squeeze one more in on the Just Transition Fund. The executive budget contains $25 million for Just Climate Job Training Fund mandated by statute. In speaking with the pipe fitters, electricians, and utility workers, they're not clear on how to access these funds. It's been a year. Can you share more about the plans to get these funds dispersed to proper training programs?
So, that goes through our Office of Just Energy Transition. We are working right now with NIPA to get that money moved into that office. It funds the office to do the work that it's supposed to do, and that, that money will be used to help transition fossil workers from fossil fuel work to green energy, as well as the...
Sorry, Mr. When are they getting the money?
The money is coming right now, and they can begin to talk to us. We are already in conversations. I'm not actually sure. I think there are probably different methods for people to apply to get that money. It's not just an open bankbook.
Have, have, has there been any outreach to those particular trades about what the process will be?
We work with them a lot. We're very connected to all of those, you know, the construction trades, and we certainly have been in conversations, as has NIPA as well.
All right. I'll leave it there and come back for a second. Thanks, Chair.
Next is the Assembly Labor Chair, Harry Bronson.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you for being here, and thank you for being a good partner and protecting workers. I want to start with unemployment insurance. And as you know, we have tremendous debt in the unemployment insurance. That impacts the state unemployment trust. It impacts the interest assessment that employers have to pay, and we're also paying to FUDA at a higher rate because of this, and that's going to keep going up. What, what plans do we have to try to help those small businesses in particular, who are, you know, really impacted on this, and they supply many of the jobs that we want to protect?
Right. So, you, as you said, the FUDA is mandated by the federal government. That's a federal payment plan that we have no impact, we have no say on. The IAS is coming, it came from the laws that you passed in 2014 to reform UI. Thank you very much for that, but it does require that the interest is paid down. And then there's the regular experience rating that everybody has. When, when, when a company's struggling, please reach out to us, either through the Business Advocate at UI, or through our career centers, through the business services people. We send people out. If somebody needs a payment plan, UI can work with them within reason. We understand that, you know, this is a, this can be a difficult problem, particularly, as you say, for a small company. But these, these issues are really, for the most part, out of our hands. They are required by law. And the good news is, in the last two years, we, we paid $1 billion each year into, to repay the trust fund, and if we're able to keep up at that, at that rate, which everything looks great right now, we should be, the, the fund should be restored by 2028.
2028. Isn't there a, a federal waiver that you can address the FUDA amount? And have, if so, have you...
Hmm, FUDA, I don't know. There's, there are other waivers, but I don't know if there's, let's find out for you, because I, I'm not aware of that, but there may be.
And of course, that's all in the context that we have to increase the maximum weekly payment under UI, but we're, we're not able to do that until we deal with the solvency, right?
It's a bit of a catch-22.
So, I was intrigued by your testimony when I read it earlier today in connection with the settlement with Uber. And with Uber, you indicated that they have agreed to make quarterly payments to UI and also do a lookback and retroactive payments to UI. I don't understand, how do you calculate what it is if they're not willing to admit that their drivers are employees?
It is a very complicated settlement. I am extremely proud of the work that the men and the women of the UI Division did to arrive at this complicated arrangement. It was an eye-popping amount of money, which I'm not allowed to disclose publicly, because it's a tax issue, but they went back to 2014 and calculated the amount. In the agreement, we agreed to disagree about whether or not they're employees, but for purposes of UI, they are paying into the fund, and a driver will be eligible to collect going forward.
Okay. And what happened to LIFT in that? Because you had another agreement with Uber and LIFT on other employee, on other benefits for their drivers.
This is only for Uber. So, in UI, it's really employer-specific, these kinds of cases, and obviously, a case like this has a ripple effect in the industry. I'm not at liberty to talk about what maybe might be doing with any other rideshare employer.
Turning to the Office of Just Transition, a couple of follow-up questions. You know, this is all about assisting in workforce training to move folks from the fossil industry into the green energy, right? And, and, and it's primarily for current workers. Is there also a component of that to try to get folks who are from disadvantaged communities or marginalized communities and have been on the economic sideline for far too long?
The CLCPA has very strong language about that. No less than 35% of the benefits of the CLCPA needs to accrue to these communities, including jobs. It's more than just jobs, but jobs specifically. So, they are very much a part of the focus of the Office of Just Energy Transition. One of the interesting things about OJET is, it is a forward-looking endeavor. So, we know what the jobs in green energy are right now, but we don't necessarily know what the job or the skill sets will be needed in, say, five to eight years. So, there's a, there's a real runway. For people who are being impacted immediately there, the people are going to be given the immediate resources, the training, the retraining, whatever. But we're also reaching into those communities to make sure that young people know, these are careers for them, and it's not just in the building and construction trades. There's all kinds of work in this space that we need to expose young people to. We have a green dashboard up on the website now that's talking about, not so much the jobs, the skill sets. It's really, I, I'm not going to tell you, prepare for this job. I'm going to tell you, you need these skills, because that's the important part of it. But it is very much forward-thinking. It's actually, you know, think about battery storage. We know what battery storage is right now, but what battery storage will be in five years will probably be totally different. But the skill set involved in that, in that world will probably be not that different. So, helping people understand, there is a future here for you, and that is under the CLCPA, that we are required to do that.
Well, and speaking of battery storage, great news from the federal government. SUNY Binghamton, Cornell, RIT will be part of a battery innovation hub, so, and, and looking at how we better do that so that we can meet our, our climate goals. But still, with the transition, I think it's $22.5 million is budgeted this year. Last year, we budgeted $1 million to get it started up.
To get it up off the ground, yeah.
This year, 22.5, plus, I think there's an administrative line there. Any idea, you know, what are we going to be spending that 22.5 million dollars on?
It's a lot of training programs. So, as Chair Ramos said, the, the, the union workers in those former fossil areas will need to have additional training to, to retrain their workers. NIPA has been very engaged with the IBEW, because they work in their plants, and they're really engaged in those conversations already. It's really looking at, you know, what are the specific skill sets that we need to train people in, and how do we do that? And some of it will be, as I said, helping these apprenticeship programs upskill and change what they're doing, but also, there are lots of other training programs out there, plus, training programs that probably need to be started. So, there's a lot of that kind of infrastructure that will need to be built. People need to be trained, all that kind of thing, and it's, it's exciting. It's a little daunting, because it's, because it's not crystal clear what it's all going to be yet. But again, we know that, we know, at least for now, what the skill sets are, and focusing on those areas.
Well, and it's a great opportunity.
It's a terrific opportunity.
To be able to create opportunities for folks. Turning to artificial intelligence. So, the governor's proposing $270 million to incentivize the development of AI. I sure hope that when we're looking at that, we make sure that if there's construction involved, we have project labor agreements. If, you know, there's a supply chain, we make sure that we have Buy American provisions in there, that we have labor peace agreements for the implementation and the maintenance of, of any facilities that are developed. But we also have to look at and be cognizant of the impact on our, our workforce, and are they replacing jobs? And, and we have to be very cognizant about that. We also have to be cognizant of employers who are using AI now for employment decisions, whether it's hiring, whether it's promoting, whether it's moving shifts, things of that nature. Has your agency been in conversations to try to tackle some of those things as we're in the beginning stages of AI?
We are indeed beginning to have those conversations. AI is a really interesting area. I mean, we all use it. If you drove your car here, you probably used Google Maps or something like that to get here. That's AI, unless you unfolded a great big paper map, which I don't think anybody does anymore. So, you know, it is a very useful tool. We want to make sure that the machines help the people, and that has always been the rub in every transformation. You know, the Luddites broke the Weaver machines, because they made lace by hand. We, we don't want that to happen here, but you have to make sure that you're doing it the right way. UI is an extremely helpful utility, and I don't think, in the short run, it's going to be replacing too many people. In the long run, it will change the way we work, undoubtedly, but we want that to be a benefit and not a deficit.
So, my, my request of, of you and Department of Labor is that we're in front of this.
Yes.
And try to ask those tough questions as we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars to launch this in the government.
Yes, and I'm very thankful the governor has done this, because we need all the help we can get.
All right. Thank you. I'll come back.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So, I just wanted to follow up on, with Commissioner for Department of Labor. I look at the timeframe where the minimum wage was raised in New York State, but it left out restaurant workers that, that depend on tips. And so, the minimum wage is not being inclusive of everybody, and majority of the restaurant workers are Black and Brown women. And so, can you tell me why they were not included in that particular raise, when that could have happened just by the governor signing a bill to, to do that?
So, the subminimum wage issue, we held hearings in, I think it was 2018, across the state. We held extensive hearings, and it was very enlightening. As a result of those hearings, the miscellaneous wage, tip wages were raised, but the hospitality tip wages were not. And that was because, in hearing after hearing after hearing, we heard from the workers, not from the employers. We heard from the workers that they did not want us to change that. Now, that... Now, that is a very significant thing to hear. If that has changed, we should hear that. But that was what we definitely heard then. And, you know, if you want to pass a law making that happen, I will happily enforce it.
One thing is enforcing, and I'm asking opinions of you as a commissioner. As you know, these restaurant workers are not being paid sixteen dollars per hour to work, and they have families, they have children, they have issues and concerns that impact them, and they need at least a minimum wage plus tips.
So the law is...
We're asking you and the governor to be cognizant of the needs that these workers have, understanding that, that most of them don't have health insurance and things like that. So it's imperative that we give them the help that they need. And not only you, but I'm really talking to you, I'm talking to the other two people, one for the OER and one for Civil Service Commission, because all of the workers in New York State basically falls to us to help them, both and from an administrative point of view, and executive, the governor, and then also from a legislative point of view. So we ask you to really consider that, understanding that, yes, there may have been hearings then, but California, Chicago, and other cities have moved towards a one-fair wage, and it's working and working fine. Fine. And you know, if it works, they're fine? This is the Empire State. We're supposed to be one that stands up and fight for workers. It's a unionized state. So I ask you to please reconsider what you're doing in order to help these workers, mainly women, mainly people of color, earn a minimum wage plus tips. That's what I ask of all three of you.
Thank you.
And then Commissioner Ho, I'm asking you, I've heard many people say, including myself, about Tier Six. And as you know, the introduction even here this afternoon was the civil service, and we, it's, y'all know, what about pensions? But I've heard loud and clear the term Tier Six sucks. That's what I heard. And what does that mean to you as a commissioner, knowing that what people feel about Tier Six? And you may want to clean it up a little bit, don't you?
So as, as you and I, and thank you for that question, as you and I have worked together to promote the, the opportunities across New York State government, I've, I've heard that loud and clear from you. Unfortunately, that, that doesn't fall up under my purview. What, what does fall up under my purview is, is looking at total compensation packages for individuals. And as, as your honorable body and with the governor's help, last year, we, we were given the ability to put out a, a, a compensation study that should be coming out, the RFP should hit the streets next month, to really look at, how, how do we compare to the private sector? And not just in pay, but in pay and benefits and, and Tier Six and, and all of that. And so we are excited about that. It'll probably be a year-long study to, to look at that, as well as look across all the titles and look at how we value titles. And so hopefully, that will take us from a piecemeal type of approach at looking at how, how do we compensate our employees? So, like I said, we, we look forward to being able to do that. Tier Six is not under my purview.
Well, hopefully, I will say Tier Six is fine, but that's not what I'm saying now.
Yes, sir.
And I've heard that from union people all over the state of New York, and so it's my job to fight for them. And it should be also the executive and agency's job to fight for the workers, so that they can make sure that after they serve, whatever time, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, they could have a pension in Social Security that they can live on.
Yeah. And so hopefully, this, this, this study will inform us all.
Okay. I want to ask about the federal, the federal government's requirement, high-income retirees to pay the greater share of Medicare and health insurance expenses. It says the ERMA applies to Medicaid beneficiaries who had a modified adjustment gross income above a hundred and three thousand dollars, and in individuals with returns, two-hundred and six thousand dollars for a joint return. And the amount range that they would have to pay more is, the minimum is seventy dollars to four-hundred-and-nineteen dollars per, per month. And I took out a calculator, that's like, for the lowest paid of a hundred and three thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars more. And for four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars a month, that's five-thousand-twenty-eight dollars. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So what's the justification for that?
And so we, we are following the federal policy guidelines that, that recommend this, and this puts us in line. And it, it says that individuals that are, that are making more should, should pay more for, for their, for their premiums. So we're just falling in line with the federal. And I, and I appreciate the concern, but the cost is, is, is beginning to, to, to grow.
And Michael Malforti, let me ask you a question about the, the union PEF. I have a, a question about the laws that were passed last year with pay structure study and opening of new service centers. Is that in your jurisdiction as far as implementing contract agreements and things that's supposed to be done?
That would be Commissioner Hoag's.
Okay, Commissioner.
So, so when you talk of, so...
Pass the buck to the commissioner.
Thank you, Michael. And so when you mentioned, so as I talked about the, the pay study, that, that's what I mentioned should be out on the streets for the RFP early next month. And what was, what was the second part you, you mentioning that I wasn't clear on?
About the, you know, opening new service centers and the laws from last year, meaning pay structure study.
So the, the other, and I believe the other piece you're talking to is our continuous recruitment efforts?
Yeah.
To open up testing centers across New York State. Is, is, is that what you're talking to?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and so we, we are definitely underway in that. We're scheduled to open up five in the fall of this year for individuals to come and sit and take a, a test. And so COVID decimated us and our ability to offer in-person testing. We, we usually use schools and that, that, that sort. And so it's, it was tough for us to get back in. And so through the, through the budget and, and your help, we were able to get the money available to open up twelve testing centers, and we're doing that on a staggered approach. And we're, we're on target for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Reardon, I heard you talk about recruitment fairs or job fairs, and I had one at Bronx Community College with the commissioner and, and other agencies. I just think that we need to come together and put a big sign out there all over the place, so we can get the people to come and get jobs. With all of these vacancies that exist, we should be echoing that we have jobs. Come, see if you qualify. If you qualify, some of you may be hired right away. And if not, then look at other jobs that are available, especially with the, the group that the Commission, Civil Service Commission approved about two weeks ago, for those people that are migrants or come in looking for jobs. As long as they're willing to work, if whatever qualifications they have, let's put them to work.
I agree. We do a lot of career fairs, and I'm very happy to say that my fellow agencies often have booths. Civil Service sits in our career fairs with us. We have, Commissioner Hoag's and I have a very close working relationship, and it's very beneficial. It used to be that career fairs were strictly private industry, not anymore.
Well, I just want to beat the drums and get people to these career fairs and job fairs, so that we can fill the jobs and fill the agencies' directives that you're supposed to do as far as enforcement and unemployment and other things like that.
I'm with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have been joined by Assembly members Colton, Jacobson, Saludi, and Jackson. And next up will be Ranker of Ways and Means, Assembly Member Ra.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner, Commissioner Director. Thank you for being with us. Commissioner Hoag, I was wondering if I could ask a little bit about, there was a report about this memo related to transitional titles that, my understanding, are going to be created for migrants and asylum seekers with the intent on hiring these migrants throughout the state agencies to fill an estimated four-thousand jobs. They're laboring non-competitive classes, mainly, I believe, in food service, equipment repairs, facility management. So can you just tell me a little bit, who will be eligible for these traditional, for these transitional titles?
So, thank you. So we, we work closely, once again, with DOL at the direction of the governor to provide and look across state agencies to see what titles may be available for individuals to participate. And so the one correction I do want to make, that these, these positions, these, these jobs that will be available are for all New Yorkers, for anyone that meets these qualifications. And so the reason why we needed to do transitional temporary titles is to give individuals the opportunity to gain the experience or get their paperwork in order to be able to transition into full-time, regular, regular positions. And so we are excited about this. And, and this is no different from our traineeships and our apprenticeships that, that we have that, that allow individuals to upskill or, or get the time on the job to be able to meet the, the qualifications. And so, like I said, this is, this is just a bigger part of our holistic approach to opening up government and, and making these jobs available and reducing the barriers. It goes along with the HELP program. It goes along with us looking at career degree requirements. It goes along with us looking at multiple choice exams and shifting to training and experience-type examinations. And so we're really looking at reducing the barriers to entry for all New Yorkers.
Okay. And, yeah, I mean, I appreciate that clarification, because I think reading the memo, and obviously talked a lot about migrants and asylum seekers. So any New Yorker who might, you know, lack documentation about credits they've had in schooling or other things would be eligible for these transitional titles.
Exactly. And, and like I said, it's, it's no different from our traineeships and, and apprenticeship type programs to, to give individuals that may not have the qualifications right now opportunity to, to learn and earn and, and be a part of our workforce.
Okay. And obviously, this, I think, relates to a conversation that's been ongoing. I know Commissioner Reardon's department as well. So any of these individuals, whether they're, you know, outside of, you know, the category of what we'd call a migrant or asylum seeker, or a migrant or asylum seeker, would be somebody who has legal work authorization.
Yes, correct.
Before they're being hired. Any idea on how long somebody would be able to stay in a transitional title?
So once again, these are temporary titles. The, the, the job is created for a twelve-month period in order for individuals or agencies to extend that period. So it, it's not for the individual in the job. So if the job is created in January, it will end in December. And so the agency will have to come back to class and compensation to say, hey, we need to extend this. So even if you hired an individual in March, they don't get to stay the next March. And so it's, it's, it's more about the, the job that is approved.
I assume perhaps, maybe they're now qualified for something that required six months of...
Right. Exactly. And so we, we, we take a regular look at that.
Okay. And, you know, that four-thousand number is, is eye-opening. Can you just tell us what other initiatives or what's been ongoing to try to do outreach and recruit to connect New York, New Yorkers with those job opportunities to try to fill some of those jobs?
Yeah. Thank you so much for that question. Like I said, we've been working very closely with our partners at DOL. They have a lot more money than we do, and so... So we do, they, they've helped out with virtual career fairs, career fairs, marketing, doing videos to, to educate the public about what's going on in New York State. And most recently, as Senator Jackson was referring to, our HELP program, our New York State HELP program, where we are, are really reducing the barriers to entry for individuals. Because of the, because of the post-pandemic job market, it, it has changed. And so agencies have, have told us, we are having difficulties hiring, and the current civil service structure right now does not lend to addressing those emergency needs.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We'll now turn to the Senate, Ranker, Senator Mike Wyke, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to say welcome today. Thank you so much for your testimony. My questions are mostly for Commissioner Hoag's. Commissioner, it's nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
I know the last time we saw you was in October, when we had our civil service reform hearing.
Oh, yeah.
And I had asked you, we, we talked about the difficulties municipal airports are having, including one in my district, Long Island-McArthur Airport. And the problem they're having is with hiring and promoting under the civil service law. I was encouraged by your awareness of the issue and openness to discuss it with the Aviation Management Association. I'm just wondering, can you provide any updates? Can we expect any action at the department level, or do you think this is going to need a legislative response?
So, and, and thank you for that question and the follow-up. So we have been in conversation with not only them, we've had conversation with Syracuse Airport. They reached out to us originally to, to start the conversation on, on the issues that they were having. And so we are waiting on specific feedback on, on issues that are, are, that are happening across, across the, the association. And so our, our team is working directly with them. And once we get that feedback, we will provide suggestions to alleviate some of the issues that they're having. Some is the timing of tests that, that may have not been made available, some is, is other stuff. And, and so we, we are, we're excited to have this dialogue, and we, we welcome it. So whenever there are issues like this, we want to get in front of it and, and have those conversations to see what we are able to do. And so hopefully, in the next week or so, we, we will hear back from them about the specific issues, and, and we will be able to address, address them and look at ways forward.
That's great. Thank you, because that's an important issue for me, and I'm very interested in seeing it revolved. So I'll be following up with you, if you don't mind. To get to the memo that Assemblyman Ra had been speaking about, I had questions as well. So we're looking at some of the barriers with allowing agencies or employing individuals like the illegal migrants. Some of the barriers include verifying their educational attainment, and this was in that memo, limited English proficiency, verifying their previous employment outside the United States, of course, checking to see if they had a criminal record. What actions are you going to be taking to be able to, to verify all of that?
And so the reduction in the, the qualifications answer a lot of that. And, and agencies have their own checks and balances in place as well, when they're, when they're going through and vetting individuals to be able to make sure that they are fit for the titles or job responsibilities that they're doing. As we mentioned, the areas of, of, of most of these are in the labor market. And so us and, and the agencies will, will continue to monitor that closely. It also talks about a lot of individuals, or some of the individuals will be working with others under direct supervision constantly. And so we, we will, we will continue to monitor that, along with DOL and, and agencies, to make sure we are, we're doing our due diligence.
And so I, I am concerned about lowering our standards like that. And of course, you mentioned earlier that lowering those standards is across, it's including existing New York, New Yorkers who are looking to attain those jobs as well. What are some of those titles, those hard-to, to recruit titles?
You would ask that, and I had it in front of me, and I apologize, I don't have it right now. But once again, it, it's no different from our traineeships and apprenticeships, where individuals are seeking to...
Well, we're just concerned, because if they're titles like law enforcement...
No.
Or that kind of thing.
No.
We want to make sure we're not lowering our standards.
No, 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 no. It is not those titles. Like I said, most of them are in the, are in the labor market.
Why do you think some of these titles are so hard to recruit? Why are we having so many difficulties?
So it is clerico-administrative support, engineering support, equipment service and repair facilities operators, food service and human services. And so a lot of those jobs, quite frankly, people just aren't interested in filling. They're, they're not, they're not really that desirable. They, I mean, it's, it's tough to...
In my previous title, the, I mean, clerical support was, we, that was, probably had the most candidates who took those tests, but the income level is so low and the steps increases are so low. Do you think that might be the problem with why they're so tough to fill?
So it, it could be. And once again, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we got approved to do our compensation, our full compensation study to help inform us on that.
I don't have enough time to ask more questions. I'm sorry.
We can follow up, obviously. I'm always available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assembly.
Yes, next we'll go with Chair Stacy Pfeffer-Armato.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Hoag, you outlined in your testimony that our state workforce has decreased by nearly ten percent. What was the cause of that, or what do you feel the cause of that is?
So obviously, we had a hiring freeze for quite some time. And then more recently, everyone calls it the Great Resignation after or during the COVID-19 pandemic. And so with, with Governor Hochul removing the hiring freeze, it has given us that opportunity to, to staff up our agencies that are, that critically need them. And so we are, we are excited that we saw a movement from 2023 to 2024 of, of adding roughly four-eight-hundred, right? So we have individuals that are trit, but... So we have individuals that attrit, but, but individuals that we hire. So overall, we have, uh, we have increased our workforce. And so when I, when I came here before, I was telling you that we had over 12,500 individuals, uh, opportunities in New York State government. Now we're, we're in the 10,000, uh, range of, of positions that are available.
So that's the current, how many vacant jobs are throughout?
Roughly.
12,000?
Uh, no, it was, it was 12,500 when I, when I testified last year and now.
So how many vacant jobs are there now in New York?
We're in that 10,000 range.
10,000.
We're making a dent.
Does that include New York City?
No. So this is New York State. New York State, New York State government workforce.
Has their own. Okay, great. Okay. So in the executive budget, there recommends 20,229 new hires for fiscal 2425. That's what the executive put in. Which positions has the state found to be the most difficult to recruit and retain employees?
That's, I mean, it's, it's interesting, interesting question. Um, we know a lot, a lot of times in docs, in law enforcement, there has been recruitment difficulties. I, I mean, that has been, that has been seen nationwide. But, um, once again, because of the pandemic has shifted and individuals, um, having opportunities with the private sector to have 100% remote work, work from home, we're, we're dealing with those types of issues. And so we're also looking at how do we educate individuals about the opportunities that are available in, in the public workforce. And so last year we were, uh, awarded, uh, the opportunity to, to do a marketing campaign, which will be kicking off in, uh, second quarter of this year, to really educate people about the opportunities that are available, how to get into, uh, civil service, to demystify the, uh, the notion that you have to know somebody, know somebody, know somebody to, to, to get in. And then also talk about the great opportunities that are available.
Fantastic. And then to retain the employees, what do you think, you know, there are a lot of folks that don't want to stay long, you know, they're not staying. What's the average, you said the average?
Yeah, about 12 years. That, so average age of entry into state government is around 36 years of age.
Right.
The average age of our current employee or workforce is a little bit under 46, about 45.9 years of age.
You're saying, huh?
I'm not saying, you did not hear me say that on this test.
Smart man.
No, of course. And, uh, so yeah, and, and so, so we, we, so we are retaining folks, uh, but it looks like we are, we, we have traditionally attracted individuals that have had a career experience someone else, somewhere else, excuse me, and, and come to, uh, state government.
I'm excited to hear about the marketing campaign. I do think it's also a secret that everyone doesn't know of our benefits.
Right.
And what those packages look like. And I was going to say that to the director, um, you know, that piggybacks of that, about letting people know our benefits. Like in my office, of my team, I had to tell everyone about deferred compensation. You know, there's not this great memo that comes out or you get a package, like getting a new job and you're all excited and everyone goes home. And I said, did everyone sign up for deferred comp? And they all looked, blinked, you know? So now everyone in Team Stacy is in deferred comp. But how do we get that out there? Because those are other benefits and abilities that we have.
I, I agree. I think we don't do a good enough job advertising how good a package of benefits we have in addition to just conventional things like health insurance and salary. So I think as part of, um, what we do, like we're going to do this year with the public service loan program, we probably need to take a look at how we advertise for ourself, not only to prospective people, but to current employees and just remind them of benefits that they need to sign up for, pre-tax benefits and, and the like as well.
Right. And probably to support my colleague Senator Jackson, if we just can get rid of tier six, it'd probably be an opportunity for, I think, you know, I think that's hanging over everyone. So it is something that we have to address.
But I, I also think, I also look at, uh, how we onboard individuals. We have to be more, um, insightful on how we do that and, and how we educate individuals about the whole process of coming in to state government. So I, I, I think we can continue to work together to look at how we do that and standardize it across the state.
No, I'm excited. I think that with the opening of a lot of opportunities and hiring more people for all your agencies, that you've really just moved us forward. So I want to thank you for that. Just changing topics, uh, Director, you mentioned about the new, um, paternity leave policies to bond with newborns and things like, you know, things like that. Listen to me. With your children, I get that. But have you heard the discussion or the conversation about unfortunately people that have, um, late-term miscarriages and that we're looking for leave for those folks? Because if you don't have a live birth, you're expected to be work, have it, you know, that happens on Friday, you're supposed to be, be back at work on Monday. So has there been any conversation? Have you heard of that? I know we're talking about in the assembly, but have you heard about that? And what can we do about that?
So aware, aware of the issue, the negotiated benefits we're looking at are for live birth, adoption and foster care admittedly. Um, for many employees, they would be able to access their normal leave benefits to deal with that, personal leave, sick leave, vacation leave, uh, for that. But the paid parental leave is, um, at least modeled in part on the parental portions of the federal FMLA benefit. But I'm, but I'm aware of the, the issue that occurs.
Yeah. I was reached out by my constituents, so I'd really urge a look at that because, you know, against, it's what affects women in the workforce. And, you know, everyone hopes for a live birth, but that doesn't happen. And I think as a state, we have to have compassion in that space. Um, to change the topic, to move back on here, um, Commissioner, again, the help pro, program is very impressive. Um, and you, it's, you've given us over 6,000 new employees, you said. Can you tell us what titles and where the jobs are? And tell us, can you just give, you know, tell everyone where, um, we were hurting for those kind of employees, where this opened up and gave the opportunities for many?
And so I, I misspoke and I apologize. Actually, when we look at, uh, state and local, we've hired over 7,000 individuals. So 6,000 on the state level and over 1,000 on the local level.
Great.
And this was initiated, um, by actually Commissioner from OTDA. He came to me and said, hey, we are struggling to fill our direct care titles and, and we need help, basically. And so our teams got together and started discussing what, what we can do. And with our backlog from COVID, we just couldn't handle it through our normal civil service process. And so we were able to, to come up with this program to, to, no pun intended, to help, um, our direct care, uh, agencies. So DOH, OMH, OPWDD, OTDA, to, to really, to really, uh, up, upstaff their, their workforce. And so, um, other agencies heard about and said, hey, what about us? Right? And so we had to, to finish this, this initial phase of it. And, and like I said in my testimony, they, they continue to, to face hiring issues and challenges as well. And, and it's important that we're able to support and, and staff up. And we, we talked about, uh, what happens when we properly staff agencies. You'll be amazed at the work they can do and, and what, what comes of it. And so, uh, when I first got here, that was one of the first things Governor Hochul said to me. We have all these vacancies. What are you going to do about it? And so I said, okay, welcome. First day. Thank you. Uh, we went to work on figuring out, how do we do this? And, and, and so we had to, we had to change up some things and, and, and create some programs and things that, that, that operate different from how we typically operate. But at the same time, I, I want to emphasize that we are, we are, um, dedicated to merit and fitness. And as we look at this help program, uh, behind the scenes, we are working diligently to improve the efficiency, effectiveness and nimbleness of our civil service system. Because it, we're, right now we're not competitive. And, and so if we want to be competitive in the future, it's going to be a technology-type approach that will, that will get us to that point. And so that, that is what my team is, is really focused on. And so the additional, uh, individuals in our, in our agency are helping us to address all these things. And, and so help is just one of.
That's one of my questions. But going along with the Senator, just take the lines of how help is so helpful. I love that we named it that. Um, in the airports, where I've heard that myself in, in my office, the feedback that they're just struggling to get employees there. Is this something we can like focus on, micro-focus to really figure out how to get more people into those sort of hard to fill positions and make ourselves competitive?
Yeah. And so once again, um, uh, the help program, the version for the localities is going before the commission, uh, next month. And as we work with the different municipalities and localities and civil service agencies across the state, we will be able to talk about which titles are appropriate. And, and so the, the other thing I want to mention is on the local level, um, municipalities have the choice of opting in or not. And so I, I, I want to make that distinction between the state and, and local.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, uh, questioner will be Senator Jack Martin's Riker for five minutes.
Good afternoon. Um, I guess first question, Commissioner Reardon, good to see you again.
Not yet. I'll wait till the end. See if nobody else asks you.
Issue I think we spoke about last year at the hearings, we're back again. Um, I hear from our building trades across the state, the difficulties they have with enforcing prevailing wage laws, um, certified payroll requirements, uh, and, you know, the obstacles they have. And part of the difficulty has to do with Department of Labor, um, not frankly having either the wherewithal to do it or hasn't shown an interest in enforcing it. So they've gone to, uh, local district attorneys and asked the local district attorneys for help. And, you know, I, I'm asking, uh, and I asked again last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what can we do? And is there a requirement? And would you suggest that we try and allocate funds in the budget for you so that you can have personnel on staff, either centrally or regionally, that can assist with enforcement? It's incredibly important that we have the ability to enforce our prevailing wage laws in this state. Certainly if, um, if people are underpaying their employees, um, that is a crime that we, we should all take seriously. And our building trades are crying for help. What do we do? And, and, and should we be allocating more monies to your commit, to your department in order to pay for that?
So thank you for the question. Um, as I said earlier, uh, it's not a question of money, it's a question of talent. We are, our conversation is how do we get more skilled investigators and inspectors into the department? We're working very hard at that. But I will say, after our conversation last year, I reached out to the building trades and I asked them, what is, you know, asked them directly, what is your problem with this? And we think that from their responses, that the issue is overstated. We have a very strong public works, uh, arm of the DOL and they go out all the time. And it's one of the groups that does do proactive visits to work sites and they talk to the workers. And they pull the records and I sign those orders when they have broken the law, frankly. I take wage theft very seriously, whether it's public money or private money. And they take their jobs very seriously. Um, you know, our, our problem is finding more skilled people to become inspectors and investigators. And we're working on that. You've heard the conversation with, with my friend Tim Hoag's here. It's not easy, but, and these are people who have to have extensive training. But they are out every day and I do sign those orders and we do return money. They returned, I don't have the figure right in front of me. It's, it's an incredible amount and I'll send it to your office.
Thank you.
But I have had that conversation with the building trades across the state. And they said they're always concerned. They're always concerned about non-union construction employers cheating their workers, but they don't have a lack of faith in my public works people.
Well, I, I appreciate that perspective. I think we've heard a challenge to the building trades, um, and I'm happy to join them in meeting with you.
Sure.
But, you know, one thing I have heard is that they're willing to serve as your investigators as well. They and their locals have people on the ground, uh, actually on many of these job sites, and they're able to provide you with that information.
And they do provide it with.
And they want to cooperate with you on that. And they've had difficulty. So there's a disconnect here, Commissioner. And, you know, let's, let's just say that if, if they are willing to do that and we are having the same conversations with the same people, we're getting different answers.
Mm-hmm.
And we will follow up on that because wage theft in this state should be certainly a priority for all of us.
We depend on our friends in the labor world to give us tips every day and we follow up on them. So I'd be surprised if we weren't. But I'm happy to have that conversation.
Wonderful. Um, again, I'm, I'm happy to do it. We will have those conversations.
Sure.
Um, but different experiences and certainly different conversations between us. Um, unemployment insurance fund, 7.2 billion dollar deficit. Um, you know, there is, uh, is there any money in this budget to, uh, help pay down that? Is any, any intention of recommending paying down from reserves and taking, uh, part of the burden off of our small business community?
That's not in my purview. Right now, the only way I can replenish the trust fund is with FUDA and the IAS and the money that the employers pay in every year.
Right. And there's $250 in, um, interest that's due annually. Um, do we have a, a proposal or is there, would you support, um, using, uh, state funds to pay for that $250 million? So we're not placing that burden on our local business?
Well, the IAS came from the UI reform bill that you all signed or supported in 2014. And that's when the IAS went into effect. Um, if you promote a bill and pass it and the governor signs it, I will happily enforce it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, next up will be Assemblymember Di Stefano. Di Stefano.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. Um, well, we've been all over the place and it kind of leaves me left in the wilderness here is which topic do I want to tackle? But, uh, the first thing I'd like to ask, I believe it would be of the Commissioner of Labor. Um, what qualifies someone, uh, for seeking employment? Like I remember when I was younger and I went to go get a job, I had to produce all kinds of documentation to get a social security card, whatever I needed to do. What do the, the migrant seekers and all, what, what do they have to do to get these jobs?
So they have to, anybody who's legally authorized to work in the state of New York has to have either been born here, or if they're not born here, they have to have working papers. And the people that we are working with, the asylum seekers, one of the things we're doing is encouraging them to fill out the federal paperwork for asylum and then fed, fill out the paperwork for the, uh, they're called EADs. It's the emergency work authorization. And once they have that, they get a number and then we can connect them with employers. That's federal law.
Okay. So if, is there a priority given to an asylum seeker or migrant looking for a job over a New York citizen or anything like that?
No.
Is there? So it's based on merit? It's based on, you know, when they came and applied?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm just not, I'm not getting it because I think that there's plenty of people in our, in our state that are looking for employment. Um, and I, the other fear that comes to me being on my union background is like, are we going to hire people at a lower rate of pay to get rid of the higher working pay getters? You know what I'm saying? Like.
That would certainly not be something I'm doing.
No, I, I understand that. But I, you know, being, I've been in the industry for a long time. I've seen where that's actually taking place, where we want to get rid of the higher paid people and bring in lower paid people because obviously economy saving money and those types of issues, uh, come into play when we're hiring people that would make less money coming into an entry level position. Um, getting into the, uh, legal authority, um, or the, what, what legal authority or statutes empower the state to create transitional titles with adjusted requirements for migrants and asylum seekers and the proposed entry level?
That would be my friend.
Yeah, yeah. No, no worries about that. And so this is, once again, this is, uh, a common practice through our classification and compensation, uh, uh, unit that, that is able to create these. And so it, it, it's basically, once again, I, I sound like a broken, broken record. It, it's similar to our, our traineeships that we've had around forever, where we, uh, have lesser qualifications for individuals to get in the door. That will lead to a pathway to a, a more permanent type position and, and career pathway. So it's, it's no different.
Okay. Um.
And, and to your, to your other point of, of, and so we, we, we've heard that conversation about, um, using these, these positions to, to undercut higher paying positions. Once again, this is, this is a pathway for all New Yorkers. So not just the migrants. For any individuals looking to enter into state government, they can utilize this pathway. We get them the skills they need. They get whatever paperwork or, or training or, or on-the-job training they need. And then this leads them, once again, to be able to move up, uh, through, through to the, to the regular, um, status.
Okay. How does the state intend to navigate any potential legal challenges or opposition that may arise concerning the proposed changes to job requirements and creation of transitional titles?
So we've never heard any legal challenges to traineeships or apprenticeships. And so I doubt we would, we, we would hear it here.
What legal safeguards or mechanisms are being put in place to ensure that the temporary employment opportunities are offered in compliance with immigration laws and regulations governing the legal work status of migrants or asylum?
So once again, as, as my partner said, that, um, we, they have to have their paperwork in order to be eligible to, to work here, even, even to, to apply.
And, um, one last question for, uh, Commissioner Reardon. We started this way back in, in COVID days, uh, with the Department of Labor, the antiquated system that we had. I remember being on Zoom call with you and addressing those issues. Um, the monies that are owed, um, that we haven't paid, there's like 31 states that use the coronavirus act, CAREs and the Affordable, um, where they, they gave money. Do you think it was proper that we never paid back any of that money? We have a ton of money outstanding, um, that needs to get paid back?
I am not in charge of the CAREs money, so I really can't have an opinion about it.
I'm just asking an opinion.
You know, other states do what they do. I think what we have done is appropriate for New York State. And I, I want to go back to something you said about the, the people in your district or in your area who need work. Our career centers are open to everyone entitled to work in the state of New York. And if you have people in your district who need a job, please send them to us.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Senator Barone.
Senator Barrow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Riordan, I want to follow up and talk a little bit about 191. I think you correctly presented this as really a boon for lawyers more than anything else.
Yeah.
But part of that's because the definition of what a manual worker is, isn't defined. You've got thousands upon thousands of workers who have filed lawsuits now that were paid every penny. And now we're going to be collecting damages and it's going to be a huge problem. I can tell you myself, my businesses, we pay our people every week. But you have those that weren't aware, and by the way, most small businesses use payroll companies and the payroll companies were not aware. But yet now, we are looking at businesses that are going out of business because of this 191 lawsuit issue. I think the Department of Labor could at least help out with trying to define more clearly what a manual worker actually is.
I could look into that. I think the recommendation to take away the incentive for these cases is really the best way to handle this. We can certainly look into it.
So this, so in the governor's budget, she's doing exactly that, correct? To take away the financial incentive to bring these lawsuits? I mean, I heard a story about a Dairy Queen owners on Long Island. You know, they're going to go out of business, millions of dollars in fines.
Yeah.
And the individual employees are going to get less than $1,000 apiece.
Yeah, it's not about the, it's not about the employees, it's about the lawyers.
Yeah, I agree with you there 100%. You know, that's, so a definition of manual worker that hopefully can be put into place even in this budget process, perhaps in the governor's 30-day amendments, that would allow essentially to eliminate some of these frivolous lawsuits that have been brought by people that clearly are just looking for a big payday, but at the expense of particularly small businesses would be the way to go.
Thank you.
You know, it was brought up before about the Unemployment Insurance Fund. NFIB on the previous panel brought this up and I realize that, you know, you do not have the ability to earmark those funds. But on top of that, I think it's important to understand that this has been a tremendous challenge. So you certainly have the ability to make a recommendation to the governor, she trusts you. You know, the governor's basically saying, we've got all this money in our, you know, in our reserves. But yet, it's like, you know, like your kid saying to you, I charged up your credit cards to max, but look at the money I have in my savings account, Mom. What about making a recommendation that we actually do indeed use some of these reserves the governor's bragging about to pay down this unemployment insurance debt?
Thank you.
That's it.
Next up will be Assemblymember Durstel.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for coming here to testify. Commissioner Riordan, just a quick follow-up from what Senator Martins was talking about. I obviously am hearing the same things, especially on Long Island, with obviously the disconnect. Some of them are saying that the enforcement of, you know, the wage theft laws and the investigators are basically aren't coming out to investigate. So do you, do you have numbers of how many investigators we have that are set for Long Island? Are they specifically set for Long Island?
Sure. Yep, I do. I don't have them right here, but I can get them for you.
Okay. I think it's nine.
No, no. Oh, no. There are definitely inspectors for public work on Long Island.
No, no, I said, I think there's nine.
Nine. Oh, I thought you said none.
No, no, I didn't say that. But, so if there, I apologize. That would have been a little rough, I'm sorry. But, but again, I am hearing the same things that the senator's hearing. And again, we're addressing it, the same thing from last year. So has there been anything done specifically to address that since last year? Because again, we're still hearing the same issues going forward and some of those unions and contractors are doing self-investigations. And the DAs, both in Nassau and Suffolk, have been great about investigating wage theft. But what is the Department of Labor doing specifically?
So we take those all very seriously and we look into, whenever they give us tips, we follow up on them. We do proactively visit work sites and talk to the workers to see if there's, you know, if there's an indication that they're being underpaid. It is, to be frank, it is a constant concern that, you know, there are, there are employers who cheat their workers. And we try every way that we can to keep that from happening. I, you know, we have a new director of public work. He's new about a year and a half and he's been doing a great job. We're doing a lot of work within the entire agency, reorganizing units, training them, giving them better tools, making sure that we're using the resources we have as effectively and efficiently as we can. For those unions who are concerned, please don't stop giving us the tips. We actually do use them and we do pursue those cases. But it is, it is a problem. The construction industry is one of the industries where it is a big problem because often there are contractors who pay in cash. They don't have records, they avoid the law, and it's very hard. But we do pursue them. We work very much with workers trying to say, please work on the books because you are not protected if you work off the books. It's, we will pursue the case, but it's much harder to get, get the records that we need, frankly.
Okay. I appreciate that. And again, you know, making that connection or figuring out what the disconnect is.
Right.
Between those contractors, the trades unions and your office, I'd love to be on that as well.
Sure.
Just so that everybody can be on the same page and we can get it fixed.
Yeah. As you know, I work very closely to building and construction trades and I'm happy to sit down and talk about it.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it and thank everybody for the panel for your testimony. You know, I just want to thank my colleagues also for bringing that up because it's very important. I'm not going to elaborate on that. But one thing that's important, Commissioner, what is the unemployment rate right now?
The unemployment right now is, in the state, it's below four, I think.
And it's a little, it's a little higher than that. And what does that equate to? How many people right now file for unemployment right now?
If you want to give me minutes, I have it here.
It's 215,000 people.
Probably.
What are we doing to get these 215,000 people back to work to go, instead of these migrants that came here, that guess what, because I'm not going to get into the state being a sanctuary, state and a sanctuary city, what are we doing to get these 214,000 people to get educated, reeducated for jobs instead of the migrant crisis disaster that has happened in New York State? And you know what? I'm asking you as the Commissioner of Labor.
So we work every day with people who are on the unemployment insurance system. They are required to register for job search and support at the local career centers. We make all of those services available to all of them and we make sure that they follow up on the appointments that they should have. Anybody who is authorized to work in the state of New York gets our services. And I really want people to understand the fact that we answered the call from the governor to help the asylum seekers who have come here and have authorization to work, find jobs, does not mean that we are not helping other people in your district or anywhere else. I want everybody to have a good career path and that's what we do every day.
We need to do a better job. We shouldn't have 4.5% unemployment, Commissioner. And you know what? We need to do a better job to get all these people back out to work. Our citizens, residents of New York State, this is a total disaster that we are not going out of our way with this. The apprenticeship programs, there's so many bogus programs that are out there, a lot. Please, what, don't, I'm asking you, what are we doing about these bogus programs that are not graduating anybody?
Our registered, if you're talking about registered apprenticeships.
Yes, registered apprenticeship programs.
All registered apprenticeships are overseen by their ATRs in the, in the agency. They are monitored twice a year, they have to meet standards. And we deregister programs every year who do not meet the standards. We're going to put those deregistrations.
There's an apprenticeship program called the Merit Alliance.
Yes.
It is a totally bogus program that, there it is, I see a beautiful letter from the governor for doing such a great job. Doing a great job, doing what?
They haven't...
What they do is they exploit their workers and what they're doing is they're using names. That's all they're using. The Merit Alliance uses names so they could get on bids, so they could bid on work. I can't believe that three minutes went that fast.
Thank you. Assemblymember.
Yes, next we'll go to Assemblymember Jones.
Good afternoon. Good evening, whatever it is. Thank you for being here. My question is, my questions are with Commissioner Hoag. I will reiterate what I said last year and it appears that, you know, we are moving forward on civil service. As last year, we said antiquated, sometimes broken system, quite honestly.
Agreed.
And everyone has mentioned here, it's a changing world, changing work environment. We need to stop putting up barriers to get our people into state employment and into local employment. Helps, I like what I'm hearing about it, but we need to put it into the local level, counties. I have counties calling me every day about the barriers. Obviously, I won't talk about Tier Six, not in your purview, but there are barriers with civil service. And at one point, it was put in, I'm sure, worked out great, but our changing world calls for us to take those barriers down. Is the helps program that's going to be implemented into the counties going to have any, what are the, what are the guardrails there? What are they, is it the same as what the state is doing?
Correct. And so I want to be clear that helps has been at the local level for the direct care.
But you have to meet certain requirements or is it just local?
So, so no. So helps has been, so after we established the help program on the state level, we did the same thing on the local level for the direct care, so health and safety type titles. And so those are the thousand-plus jobs that they have utilized. And so now that we're expanding it, we're doing the same thing.
Okay. Are we expanding it for everyone? I know helps the acronym, but everyone needs help here. I have departments coming to me, 30, 40% vacancy rates. You know what they say? Civil service. By the time you sign up for the test...
Yep.
I have figures right here. I had, I have my dispatchers in today. Nine to 10 months before they can actually hire somebody in this competitive job market that we're in right now, that's just unacceptable.
So that's, that's extreme, but when I first got here, I asked the same thing. I pulled back the curtain and said, why does it take so long for us to be able to hire an individual?
What about using more technology in there?
And that, and that is the approach that we're talking about in this parallel path. As we utilize the helps program to staff the emergency positions and the vacancies and this employment gap, we're taking that time to reimagine our civil service delivery system and that whole, from advertising the position to the time an individual gets to take the test, to the time they enter in the safety...
Provisional.
No, no.
Big issue. Provisional.
Right, yeah.
With our, with our locality.
And so helps, helps, helps with that as well.
Okay. I don't want to be here next year talking about the same thing. I hope these, I hope, I hope we make progress in this.
Thank you. And anywhere you need me to come, we'll be there to talk to constituents.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I think I'm the last senator, with the exception of a follow-up question from Senator Ramos after we get back and forth. So going back to the, I'm sorry, first Commissioner Riordan, the wage theft issues. A bill that many of us worked very hard on, which got negotiated and weakened before the governor agreed to it, was the LLC database of who in fact is behind all these businesses in New York. And it does appear that when we get some significant complaints about wage theft in New York City or in my district several recently, even this week, it's companies not paying their workers but hiding behind fake LLC companies or LLCs you can't track. So we wanted the ability to have on the database the LLCs for everyone to look at. And under the negotiated changes, it will only be certain, certain people in law enforcement. And yet, for you, when you are trying to track down wage theft, it seems to me that it's pretty critical that Department of Labor can work with the violated workers to figure out who the hell they actually were working for and having their wages withheld from them. So will you have access? Do you know about this at all?
I actually don't know. And that's a really good question. Let me find out. I know that it was changed in the negotiations, but I don't know where it ended up. So I'll get you an answer. It's a good question.
I mean, because I think it won't go into effect for two years maybe, but I think it's really a critical tool.
Yeah.
For your agency.
I agree.
To be able to figure out because this is a constant struggle for us. We have companies even who have drawn down tax incentives from economic development or through IDAs that we then later learn, actually, we're violating all these labor laws and not paying their workers. And then when you try to track them down and figure out who the heck it is that anybody was working for, you find it's one company, that's the LLC, who supposedly is the owner of the property. It's another LLC who was subcontracted to, to hire everybody. It was another LLC that picked it all up when somebody started to ask questions. So I think it's really crucial to help you and your people get to the bottom of things quickly, that we actually make sure that you have access.
Thank you. So we do civil law enforcement and I will check into it.
Okay. Thank you. And then you referenced before that if we're doing anything like we did them 10 years ago, we're probably not doing it right. So I know things have gotten much better since the pandemic, but we still get calls every day that people can't get the phones answered when they call DOL and they have questions or they have problems. What do we need to do?
I know. So very complicated. We've talked about this before. The surprising fact is that the volume of calls coming in to the UI call center are three times as high as they were at the same unemployment level before the pandemic. So clearly, something has changed in the public. And I have talked with other agency heads, I even talked to my doctor's office. They all said the same thing. The public has a very different expectation of service delivery, partly because they could order everything online during the pandemic. And it has really changed the way they expect delivery. So we are adapting, you know, I can't just yell at them and say, don't call as much because that's not productive. But it is a problem because it is three times as high and we struggle to do the, to catch them all. In July, our new CCAI phone system went into effect and we now have virtual agents that can answer many questions, including authenticated questions for authenticated specific people. That system alone has answered five and a half million questions since the end of last July. So it is a big help. Obviously, it has not erased the problem, but it is a large help. The chatbot on the, on the site, Perkins, now is communicating in 14 languages. And it can answer not only general questions about, you know, how long do I wait for a check and all that kind of stuff, but if you authenticate, authenticate your claim with your number, then it can answer certain questions specific and you won't have to work with an agent. The new system will alleviate all of that. The new system goes online later this year. It will be soup to nuts, a brand-new system. And let me just say about the new system, it's not just a lift and shift from the 1970s mainframe to a new cloud-based system. The 1970s mainframe had, it's a Frankenstein, literally. It has over 270 mini systems that I call the barnacles that are attached to this system that have kept it running all these years. So when our developer came in, they not only had to develop a system for the mainframe, they had to untangle the Frankenstein attached to it, code all of that, and then move it into the cloud. So we are close. It is a day that I will absolutely drank champagne when it goes live. I urged you to join me. But it will really be an amazing transformation of this system. And it will alleviate the need for people to talk to an agent as much. They will be able to do, do their claim online. There will not be that complicated, you know, phone path that we used to have. It will aggregate all of our data into one data warehouse so we're not searching through the mainframe and the Frankenstein system to get the information. It's all in one place. It goes from the very first issue of the first claim all the way through the last appeal. This is the largest UI system rebuild in the country. And when it is up, we are told by our friends in Washington, they believe it will be the gold system, gold standard for the country. But it has been, as you know, a very difficult job. I am very proud of the men and women who've done this work, but it is very difficult. And I, I urge you to join me the day it goes live.
Okay. We'll look forward to that.
Me too.
I don't drink, but I'll be happy to stand there with you.
Yes. Whatever you drink, club soda, I don't care.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to the Assembly.
Thank you. We've been joined by Assemblymember Santa Barbara. And the next questioner will be Assemblymember Jacobson. And the next questioner will be Assemblymember Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Workforce development now are the new cool buzzwords. But just because some entity says they do workforce development doesn't mean they do it. And I have, so I think we need accountability in this, which is why I submitted a bill, so that those receiving state funds would report once a year to the Department of Labor. They would say how many people they reached when they did their outreach. And it doesn't mean, oh, I did three hundred people, meaning that they went to a auditorium in a high school where the kids were sleeping. No, they gotta have the phone number. Want to know how many took the training, how many finished the training? And of those that finished, did they get jobs? And what is their status, six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months later? And the problem is, we have people that take the money and there's no results, and you don't know what's going on. So I hope you would consider that.
Thank you. You know, the workforce development is a sweet spot for me. I think it's a really important part of what we do. Being able to quantify workforce development is difficult for everybody in the country for a lot of different reasons. But your suggestions are good. All of our money is, is federal money, so it comes with federal regulations attached to it, but we would certainly entertain.
I'm a peon, I don't, I don't get three minutes. So, you know, all I'm gonna say is that if you believe in government to do good things, then, then we have to be more responsible to make sure things are being done.
Well, I thank the governor for setting up the new Office of Workforce Data, which will actually give us a lot of muscle in that area.
The other thing is, um, you know, one thing that you should reach out and do a collaboration with the Department of Education is on PTEC. PTEC is tremendous, right? They get a two-year degree at the end of high school. And, and of course, they're providing transportation. They get paid internships. And in the Hudson Valley that I represent, they go to IBM, they go to Global Foundries. When PTEC started about ten, twelve years ago, we started, we, we were the first in the country. We have sixty now. Texas started two years after that. They have nine hundred. So we've gotta get our act together there. And one other thing, when we do training, is that just, just because, we, let's say this, we don't want to build a bridge to nowhere, and we don't want training that doesn't lead to a job.
Nope.
And what we need to do is make sure that we talk to the employers and ask them, what do you need? What skills do you need? And have them, basically, write the curriculum so that this training doesn't leave to nowhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, um, excuse me, we have Chair Ramos for her three-minute follow-up.
Thank you, Chair Krueger. I wanted to bring up the topic of home care workers, Commissioner. We gave home care workers a raise to address the home care shortage. And this budget is proposing a cut to their wages. So I'll, I'll actually kind of talk about a little table I have here. In FY twenty-three, we established their wage at nineteen dollars and nine cents in New York City. Um, in FY twenty-four, twenty-one oh-nine. And now, in this proposed FY twenty-five budget, we're now down to eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents per hour. So I, I guess, I, I'm interested in what your analysis for that particular workforce is and whether this is actually going to help us address the workforce shortage that we have.
So that's interesting. I don't actually know about that, um, that part of the budget, because it's not us. But I certainly will look into it. You know, we really appreciated the increase that was passed. And it's very, very important. It is a very tough job, as we all know, and we have a growing need of home care workers, because we're all getting older and we're all gonna need them. So we're very aware of that.
And many of us are very worried about how our, our aging parents will be taken care of. And certainly, we're on our way there too. Well, since we have a little more time, I want to ask about adults with disabilities. Only thirty-three percent of adults with disabilities are currently employed in New York State. What has the department done to prioritize disability-inclusive hiring practices in state agencies? Maybe that's a twofer.
You wanna go first?
Sure. So thank you for the question. Last year, in the process, we increased our fifty-five B program from twelve-hundred to seventeen-hundred, because we were, for the first time in state history, we were, we were approaching that ceiling. And so that program continues to thrive. We're over the twelve-hundred mark. The area that we're having struggles in is the fifty-five C, which, which is for veterans with disabilities. And so we've been working with our Chief Disability Officer and Commissioner for Veterans to really see how we can promote those opportunities. But we also believe that the Help program will be able to address those, because it takes away some of the barriers for qualifying for the program. And individuals could enter right into state government with permanent opportunities. And so we're, we're excited to see what that will do.
You need helmets to hard hats in civil service.
So all of our career centers have adaptive technology, both hardware and software, for people with disabilities. Our, our mantra is, we meet our people where they are. And, and we want to put people to work, whatever that work may be. We are very connected across the state, very proud of the work. And I'm really proud to work with Kim Hill, because she is an amazing force of nature leading this charge. And, you know, I told her, sign us up, we're there.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yes, next questioner will be Assemblymember Slater.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon to the panel. Thank you so much for joining with us. Commissioner Riordan, great to see you again. I just wanted to follow up on our conversation that we had last month. One of the things that we discussed was Indian Point and the building and trades workers who are there. To date, we've seen a hundred and three carpenters be laid off, twenty-one operating engineers, as well as electricians and iron workers. I brought this to you last month. And I'm curious if you've engaged with the Westchester Putnam Building and Trades to provide any type of services for their members, or what the plan is moving forward for the men and women who work at Indian Point.
Yeah, it is, you know, uh, Indian Point was going on when I came in, many, many years ago, it seems, and it's still there. We, we do the warn services when people are laid off. And warn services are an early intervention. So we meet the workers, we explain what their rights are, we offer any kind of employment services they may need, what other training do they need, all of that. And we're very, we work very closely with the Putnam folks, and hadn't have for a long time on this. It's, um, it's, it's a difficult situation, but we definitely have reached out to them and we're there for them, whatever they need.
And are you in communication with Holtech in regards to any future layoffs that may be planned?
I think we are. Let me find out. I mean, we know, I know they have to report it to us, but I don't know what kind of lag time we get ahead.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
I also just wanted to follow up on your comments earlier regarding the UITF. And so you said earlier that we've, we've been able to pay back two billion over the last two years. And that you're anticipating by 2028 that it should be fully restored. So does that mean by 2028, that's the year that the IAS will be suspended?
The IAS will be suspended when there's no more debt to pay the interest on. So yes.
So 2028 is the.
Assuming, assuming it's paid off, there will be no interest, because there will be no, nothing to pay on.
Fantastic. Because I think you've heard plenty of times today from the business community that we keep hearing from regarding that surcharge and the impact it's having.
I mean, obviously, market conditions contain, continuing the same, but in the last two years, that's definitely what we've done, and it seems to be pretty good, so.
In my remaining, I appreciate that. In my remaining time, I just wanted to talk about AI quickly. Do we have ascertained or any idea how many state agencies are currently utilizing AI when it comes to hiring or even managing workforce productivity?
It's interesting, because AI has so many different applications. So no, I don't think we have a distinct list, because again, AI is, you know, hey, Google, it's your phone, it's all of that stuff. It's definitely in use, but I don't know, I don't think we have a compendium of them, because it's too broad.
Understood. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So quickly, Commissioner Ho, the Civil Service Commission authorized the expansion of New York Helps. Does that include the localities, the local governments also?
So as, as I mentioned earlier in my testimony and, and follow-up question, that we will be bringing that request in front of the Civil Service Commission next month. So to.
And hopefully, the answer is thumbs up?
Hopefully, the answer is thumb, is, is thumbs up, yes. Because we, we've heard from localities constantly talking about the struggles that they've been having and requesting for the expanded Helps program.
Regarding the Irma, how many retired state employees do we have on record overall? Because if in fact, if that goes through, it's gonna be devastating for those retirees that own fixed income.
So I'll have, I'll have to follow up with you on that to, to find out how many there are.
And Director, about forty, with respects to, you said, consistent with the governor's state of the state message, requesting the budget, office take the lead in providing additional diversity and equity and inclusion training for state workforce, added work environments, inclusivity, and continue to move forward New York as an employer of first choice. Where are you at with that now, if anything?
So we've rolled out a series of trainings. A number of years ago, we rolled out a gender identity toolkit for all state employees, and we're on the cusp of launching an additional training. And most of the training in this area is, because the area is so broad, it's, it's general education, it's education on what the law is, because all state employees are required to comply with the law. And it also talks about real-world experiences and general respect in the workplace.
Sure. And if in fact, there's, there were, if in fact, there were claims of discrimination in the workplace, would that go to OER, or would it go to the labor, or would it go to the civil service? I would think that would be in your, your camp. Is that correct?
Yeah. For all direct, controlled by the governor, executive branch agencies, complaints of protected class discrimination are required to be investigated by OER.
Okay. Well, I want to thank all three of you for coming in and trying to answer all of the questions that we have. Obviously, we want a perfect world of, which includes everyone, including those restaurant workers that are, you know, depending on a minimum wage plus tips in order to earn a living. So I want to thank all three of you for coming in.
So it seems like you have fifteen seconds left. And so I do want to take, take, make a cheap plug that for anyone that would like for civil service to come into their district and educate their, their individuals on what's going on and opportunities, we would be happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. The next questioner will be Assemblymember Giglio.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here this afternoon. And I, I guess my question is back to the unemployment issue and the people that are on unemployment. I've been to the career centers. They really don't look like they're functioning every day. I'm told in meeting with the labor, many representatives of your office, that the requirement for somebody that's on unemployment is to go to the career center once every ninety days.
They have to check in, they have things that they have to do. There is a protocol. Do you mean that my workers don't look like they're doing anything?
No, no, your workers were great, and they were very informative. And I was actually very impressed with the AI and the process in which to apply for unemployment. But we've lost the human touch. And that's what I'm concerned about, is that there may be more people accessing unemployment that are capable of working and capable of being matched with jobs that are not. Because I'm hearing in the employment community that they have people that are on unemployment that are calling, making an appointment to come in and interview, and then they're not showing up. And no one from Department of Labor is ever following up to see if that person actually showed up for the interview and whether or not the job was offered to them. And if it was, why did they reject the job? And if they rejected the job because they didn't think they had the skills, then I would think that that would mandate them immediately going to the Career Opportunities Center to get those skills, so that if they were interested in the job in the first place, that they should be trained for that job. So I'm happy to hear from civil service that those career centers are going to be utilized by civil service as well. I just am wondering, I, I just think it's too easy to collect unemployment and there's no accountability on the unemployed to get a job. And I think that it's either Department of Labor is short-staffed and you can't have that one-on-one connection to find out what happened, why they didn't get the job, or why they didn't show up. So if you could fill me in on that, please.
So everybody who comes into UI has, they, they develop their own account, and they fill out their skills.
I set one up.
Yes. So you know, you know what the process is.
Yes.
And every week, we send out emails to customers, and you don't have to just be on unemployment. You can be, you can come in and get these services without being a UI customer. Every week, we send out emails with leads. These are the, these employers in your area are looking for people of your type, and, you know, here are the details. A lot of those are very, very successful. We do not follow up individually at this point with each person for each job opening that we've recommended. I don't think that we would be able to, quite frankly.
Well, I'm happy to hear that you're going from the old mainframe into a cloud-based system, because we did that on a local level. But I think that there needs to be a mechanism in there also for employers to report that this person on unemployment didn't show up. And if it becomes a habit, then that person should no longer be collecting unemployment. They're on unemployment for too long.
Interesting, interesting idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll turn to Senator Rhodes.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I know we're running towards the end. I want to thank you for your patience. I'm also pleased that I was able to get here from session, so I could chime in with a, a couple of follow-up questions. Wanted to talk specifically, even though this is under the purview, really, of the Department of Health, the Occupational Health Clinic Network. I know that in the, in the current budget, there is nine-point-eight million, I believe, reserved for that, which has been flat for really the last ten years. Are there any plans? I know there was an ask in the, in the one house from the Senate last year. Are there any plans on the part of the administration to expand those services?
I think you're asking me. He doesn't know. Neither does Michael. I'm not sure, because it is a DOH initiative. I can find out for you, but I don't, because it's not in my agency, I don't know the workings of it, but I can find out for you.
Understood. I mean, especially since it, I mean, it's such an important connection to, to labor, provides some specific industries, industry-specific diagnosis and medical treatment, helping them to be able to get back to work. I mean, from a labor perspective, it certainly is incredibly important.
Right.
And the flat funding for the last ten years certainly isn't reflective of the increase in cost. So if you could do that, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next questioner will be Assemblymember Santa Barbara.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. Thank you all for being here. I know it's been a long day. Just wanted to ask a question about employment for people with disabilities. I know we talked about the unemployment rate, much higher amongst that population. I know there's some legislation that we passed and some programs. Just wanted to get your feedback on the progress we're making and what more we can do, perhaps in this state budget and maybe through legislation and the rest of the session. I have a son who's twenty-two and, you know, perhaps with a job coach and some other things, you know, he may be looking into this as well. As many, many people come to my office, ask the same thing. How can we open up these employment opportunities? And I, I will say that I have seen more in the past few years, because there is a workforce shortage and people are looking, private companies are looking to hire. Just wanted to get some feedback on what's happening with your department.
So as I said, we do have adaptive technology in all of our career centers, and we have career counselors trained to work with, you know, people in various, with various barriers, including disabilities. And we work very closely with, of course, the, the not-for-profits and the schools and all the other support systems in the state. It's a very broad, as you know, I'm sure, a very broad group of support, and we're part of it. We really believe that anybody who can work should work. And we support that wholeheartedly. I have had wonderful conversations with Kim Hill about it, because it is, it's actually a very meaningful thing for me as well. And, and anything we can do to, to be more accessible, to be more engaged as a partner, we will do it. Because our job really is to help people find work, whatever that work may be.
And if, and if I may jump in.
Yeah, please.
And so from a state aspect, working with Chief Disability Officer Kim Hill, she's held her second Dream Event, where we, where we talk about opportunities for individuals with disabilities to enter into the workforce. I think it's about education, about the opportunities, and, and making sure state agencies are aware that we have a, a population that is ready to work. And then there was another thing that, that came through one of the Dream Events is Special Olympics came. And we part, we, we had, we had a great time with them. And then I followed up with them, and I was able to go to one of their opening ceremonies and talk about the opportunities that are available in state government. So it's looking at opportunities for marketing and getting that word out through partnerships we may have not thought about in the past. And so I, I think we're moving in the right direction.
That's great to hear. And just, just quickly, some of the, I just had to pull up some of the information, some of the people that call my office. Some of them lose their PIN number, some of them have problems accessing the automated Some of them have problems accessing the automated system and they, and they have trouble getting to a, a live person. And most of the complaints come from, again, the long wait times. So I just wanted to ask about that real quick. And also, the worker, workers' compensation, the, the applications and the, if you get denied or have to go appeal, that process takes a very long time. Sometimes people don't get the treatment they need to get back to work and that's all they want to do. But it, sometimes it goes from three months, taking, you know, going to the hearings and it ends up taking nine months, up to nine months or even more.
Sorry, you'll have to continue after the hearing, a follow-up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Assemblymember Smullen.
Thank you very much. I've got some questions for the Commissioner from the Department of Civil Service regarding this migrant memo. It's, to me, it's, it's very unbelievable in many ways. The background of the memo says that Governor Hochul has taken several steps to address the migrant crisis, including identifying more than 18,000 job openings with hundreds of employers who are willing to hire migrants and asylum seekers with legal work status in the United States. The governor's also looking for state agencies to participate in this effort. Agencies have identified 4,000 positions, entry-level titles that can potentially be filled. And the proposed solution is to help state agencies address the employment barriers faced by migrants and asylum seekers. The Division of Classification and Compensation will create positions in, quote, "transitional titles" with requirements in line with the candidate's qualification. It goes on to say that appointments would be temporary, but once they obtain the required qualifications, are reachable on an appropriate eligible list. And if their work performance has been satisfactory, agencies may appoint them to the target titles. So what you're saying is that asylum seekers who have not had their cases adjudicated in federal court could become state employees with all the benefits, including all the retirement benefits that they would obtain, before they've even had their initial or their, their case actually settled in federal court.
So what we're saying is anyone eligible to work in New York State has this opportunity, not, not just the migrant workforce. And so this, once again, I will reiterate that this is nothing different from programs that we've had in the past. And I also want to reiterate that this is open to all interested parties that, that want to take place.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Okay.
I get the Helps Program for rural.
So this, this isn't, this, this isn't Helps?
I know it's not. I know it's not. I've been listening very carefully.
Okay.
I've been listening to your testimony and your written testimony, which mentioned nothing about this. And this is what's, this is what's disturbing, is that we're here to talk about the budget for this year, not the budget for last year where we spent more than $2 billion on, on illegal immigrants. This year, we're going to spend $2.5 billion on migrants. And here's what actually federal immigration law determines. Migrant is not a word in the federal lexicon, which is actually the governing authority for immigration in New York State, in all the states. It has to be. An immigrant is any person lawfully in the United States who is not a U.S. citizen, U.S. national, or a person admitted under a non-immigrant category as defined by the Immigration and Nationality Act. So, and I've got just a few seconds. What we're proposing here is to give people who don't have that status the ability to collect a New York State pension or accrue benefits and then, and collect the New York State pension. Is that, is that true?
So obviously, it's a statement and we can, we can follow up because I don't have enough time to.
Yeah, please do, because this is bad policy. We don't want bad policy in this slippery slope area. You know, this needs to be considered very carefully.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll take my second round of questions. This is for you, Commissioner Riordan. You know, the whole wage theft issue is concerning to me. We know that there are a lot of bad actors out there. We know we need to protect those workers. But at the same time, you look at the labor law and you look at the penal law defining wage theft and larceny. And each one of those areas, it talks about the failure to pay wages. Not the failure to pay on a frequency basis, or not the failure to pay on time, it's the failure to pay the wages. But we also know that we put penalties in place to incentivize employers not to break the law, but also to have attorneys to reach out and help you with your job to find out if there's wage theft going on. So I'm very torn by the approach of getting rid of the liquidated damages. But even if we go there, even if we go there, what steps are you going to take as an agency to correct the behavior? Because we have that weekly pay for a reason. It's cash flow in the household. That's why we have it there. So what, if, if the governor gets what she wants, what will the agency do to try to make sure these employers do the right thing and pay on time?
It's an interesting question. Most of the attention that this area has had in the agency for the last couple of years has been because of these lawsuits. Occasionally, people will say, I'm not being paid correctly, and will investigate it and make a decision. And they'll either pay weekly or bi-weekly, whatever the law applies to them. But it has not been a big problem. The big problem was that it was seen as a, a windfall because of the liquidated damages. So, you know, they're actually kind of two separate questions.
But they're not really two separate questions because your agency wouldn't know about the wage frequency payment violation. You wouldn't know about that without attorneys seeking that out. So, and, and we, and we have a policy. We want manual labors to get paid every week. And we do that because of cash flow in the household. So if you take away the incentive for attorneys to go out there and, and try to enforce the law through lawsuits, I think we're, we're going to create a problem there. So, so that's one piece of it. The other piece is, keep in mind, I mean, we changed sexual harassment laws and other harassment laws to issue attorneys' fees. So attorneys would take on those cases. And we're kind of doing the opposite policy here. So, you know, I don't know the answer. I'm just posing that we need attorneys to be a part of this.
So we should have a conversation. This is, yeah, let's talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Just quick. Commissioner, on the 55B and the 55C programs, you said the B plan is doing pretty well in the changes that we made last year. 55C is for veterans.
Yes.
What are the challenges there that we're not fulfilling or filling? The amount of people that we could hire under that program?
Yeah, so 55C has a max of 500 slots allotted to it. So we have increased since I've been here, but it's still not performing to the rate that the 55B is. And so there's actually a little over 100 slots that are filled. And so we are, we continue to work with Chief Disability Officer Kim Hill. We, we believe that her Dream Events are bringing and highlighting the opportunities that are available. And so we, we look forward to this opportunity to, to continue to promote and work with the population, as well as working with Commissioner Dick, Dick Cawhin for veterans and to, to like collaborate on, on some of the career fairs that we've had to, to really target that population and see why they have not accessed state, state government as an option for employment. But also with the, with the Helps Program and our marketing campaign, we're, we're really going to focus on, on the population as well. And we have, we have to review our 55B and C requirement for individuals to qualify for the program and see if there are barriers that, that are inherent to that qualification process to streamline that as well.
Right. Because I, I, as we discussed, you know, in the state, unfortunately, you have to self-identify and the agencies actually have legislation, not that I'm promoting myself here, but legislation to have the agencies speak to each other. So if a veteran's identified in housing, it would come to you. So, not that I won't tell you how to do your job today, but when we're doing the marketing, I think it is a hard group to reach. And being that we have 400 slots open, and I just heard you say that we can market specifically to our veterans to make sure, even if it's advertisements within our veteran home areas that we know in our CBOs that they identify, just in that specific area. Because I believe once they're halfway in that door, the Helps Program or something will work because I can hear from all of you that your goal, of course, is to hire. And certainly, we want to hire our veterans. But I would love to be able to, you know, work with you closer to figure out how to get those slots or what we can collaborate together because it's just a good opportunity.
Yeah.
So thank you. Yes.
We have dedicated career counselors in the career centers who are veterans, who work with this population. So I'm going to work with my friend, Tim, to make sure that we have a robust referral process as well.
Well, when you talk about coming to the district, I think that's great to say on these job fairs and be able to specifically say.
Yes.
And for our veterans, you know.
Yes.
And again, one thing we talk about in the state is that our veterans are all different ages, you know, they're not just the, what we think about, the, the nice guy with the little poppy seat, you know. So again, I look forward to working with both of you in this area. Thank you so much for all your testimony today. Okay, done?
All right. I think we've gotten through all of our senators and assembly members for the three of you. Thank you very much for being with us here today. I think some of you have some follow-up answers to get to us. If you please get them both to the Assembly Ways and Means and to the Senate Finance, we'll make sure all the legislators get copies of your answers. And with that, I'm going to excuse you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go back to your agencies and work. Well, all right, maybe not. It's 6 o'clock. It's up to you, I guess, at 6 o'clock. I would like to call up Panel A, Retired Public Employees Association, Organization of New York State Management Confidential Employees Association, CSEA Local Thousand AFSMI, and New York State Public Employees Federation. I will ask everyone to take their conversations out in the hall so that we can continue with the next panel. And I will also introduce, we've been joined by, I think, Senator Rhodes, Senator Chu, Senator Mayer. I think that's the new senators so far. All right? I don't know if there are any new assembly members. Nope. Same old assembly members. Thanks for being with us. Thanks for waiting. Well, not that long because you knew we weren't starting at 2:00, at 2:00. You were all old hats at dealing with the legislature. So nice to see you all. Why don't we start with the Retired Public Employees Association? Good evening. No, you don't want to?
Thank you, Chairwoman Kruger, other members of the fiscal committees, honorary chairs. I'm Ed Farrell. I'm the Executive Director. It's an honor to be here almost this evening. RPA, there, there's roughly 500,000 retirees in the state and local retirement system. And contrary to public opinion, 80% of those retirees stay here in New York. So you know who we are. We're in your districts. You see us all the time. I have three priorities I want to talk about. The first one is the COLA, the Cost of Living Increase for the Pension. This is not part of the executive budget proposal for this year, but it is something that we hope you will act upon this year because there is a lag involved in implementing it. Just a bit of background, 23 years ago, when the cost of living was implemented, it was never a true COLA. It was only half a COLA. You would get 50% of the COLA. It could never be higher than 3%, nor lower than 1%. And that formula's never been changed. So for 23 years, it's gone unchanged. Right now, we have an excellent proposal. Senator Jackson, Assemblywoman Pfeffer Amato have sponsored on behalf of the retirees. And something different, it contains a catch-up provision. A lot of our older retirees have very small pensions and are really having a difficult time. 24% of the retirees in the state and local retirement system have a pension of $10,000 or less. Just think about that. And 43% of the retirees have a pension of $20,000 or less. These are the folks that need help. So what this bill does is to go back and say, we have these constraints within the formula, never higher than 3%, never lower than 1. What if we went back 23 years and stayed within those parameters and gave those retirees a boost? You would get the real COLA. It could never be higher than 3%, though. And it would go back and help the people who need it the most. These are people in their 70s, most are in their 80s, some higher. But if you're living on a pension of $10,000 or less, you, you're struggling. And this, these are people who've committed themselves to public service. So we hope that you will act upon this bill this session because it has an effective date of next year. And the reason it takes effect a year after the fact is, one, the controller needs the opportunity to go back and recompute all 23 years' worth of formula calculations for those who are eligible. And two, if the bill were to pass next year and it were not to be transmitted to the governor quickly, we would never meet the, meet the September deadline to get it implemented. So we want you to do that. There are two other proposals I'll talk about quickly. These are both budget issues.
Have to cut you off.
Okay.
Maybe someone, maybe somebody in their questions will ask you about it.
Okay. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Organization of New York State Management Confidential Employees, Barbara Zarin. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Your mic is not on, Barbara. Have to press the turn.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening, everybody. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak with you. I'll try to cover a couple of things quickly. There are three proposals in the governor's budget that I want to mention related to the workforce. One is removing educational barriers, meaning taking away the college degree requirement for certain jobs. We're not opposed to that, but it needs to be done on a case-by-case basis, not a blanket exemption. Eliminating the lag payroll and salary withholding for new hires is something that we support. And eliminating the subsidy for Medicare Part B, IRMA, we're absolutely opposed to as we have been every year in the past when this has been proposed. We have an issue of continuing concern that is agencies continue to see classification of additional positions in the exempt and non-competitive jurisdictional class to avoid the use of competitive class positions. Our concerns include the fact that this ignores the constitutional requirement of a merit system based on competitive examination. The exempt positions may be paid without regard to the state's statutory compensation plan, and such positions may lack basic civil service, job protections, and union representation, which are two things that we're concerned about for our, for our workforce. We believe we need to reduce the use of exempt and non-competitive classification for the jobs that should be in the competitive class. And let me rush off to the Help Program, which had a, a good deal of discussion already. We do have some concerns about the Help Program. And as I listened to the discussion earlier, I said, oh my goodness, there's some of the same things as we're concerned about. We seem to be on the other side of the folks who were, who were speaking. But placing a position in the non-competitive class requires a finding that it's not practicable to determine merit and fitness by competitive exam. Some people tend to say, well, I'm having trouble recruiting people, so I need to have a non-competitive classification. That's not what we're talking about. Suspension of open competitive exams, which is another feature sometimes, is problematic. Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, we have been able to. After we.
Great. Thank you, all. It's good to see everybody. Chairman Thompson, welcome. Glad to see you up there in a different role. I'll start off tonight, as I started off last year, we are in a public sector staffing crisis. We are still in that crisis. Since 2012, and these are numbers I used last year and they have not changed, we lost 17,000 FTEs since 2012 on the state side, all while spending over $1 billion in overtime last year alone. We've lost 28,000 positions in local governments. We've worked with the legislature. We are thankful for what we've done in the last year. We've waived civil service exam fees. We're going to better promote civil service exams. We're doing continuous recruitment. We're doing a lot, but we need to, we need to do more. So what, what can we do? You know, this was not under the purview of Commissioner Hoag's, but it is under your purview, Tier 6 reform. That is the top of our list. We need to make change this year. We are not asking for everything, but we need to advance our agenda. We need to make some reforms, contributions. We can look at final average salary, the, the calculation of the pension at 20 years. We have a number of options that we can work on. And this is a recruitment tool. It's also a retention tool. We are supportive of the New York, the Helps Program. It is bringing people in. It's temporary. We view it as temporary, but we are very supportive of it. We support the governor's proposal in Part Q to eliminate the five-day withholding and the ability to negotiate the lag payroll. I testified to this at the hearing in October with Senator Jackson, that Senator Jackson held here. I was about two seats over when I said it. We need to eliminate barriers to public employment, and that is nothing but a barrier. That is nothing but a deterrent for people coming in. We are opposed to the closure of five Department of Correctional facilities with only 90 days' notice. We can have a policy debate on whether correctional facilities or any state institution should be an economic driver, whether that should be an economic development program for a county or a region. That's a worthy debate, but the fact is, is they are. In rural parts of our state, Franklin County, go up to Washington County, Essex County, that is economic development, and to close a facility with 90 days' notice, only 90 days' notice, rather than the one-year requirement in law, is a disservice to the communities themselves that cannot plan for it appropriately, to the families and our members that work there that are going to have to make a decision on what they're doing next with only three months' notice. The governor can close these facilities at any point. We want the one-year notice respected. And as I said last year, to close out, I'm missing Taco Tuesday again with my family this year to be here, and they're watching at home, so hello to my kiddos again.
New York Public Employees Federation, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. So, good evening, Senators Kruger, Assemblyman Bronson. I'm so glad to see you and to all the other members of the legislature. I'm Randy D. Antonio. I am one of the vice presidents of the New York State Public Employees Federation, and I chair the PEF's statewide political action committee. So, the decimation we've seen in the state workforce is nothing new. It's a result of a decade of neglect by the former governor. So, first off, I need to thank Governor Hochul and each and every one of you for enacting so many reforms last year that have helped start, get us back on track. These reforms have come online. They are making a difference, but none of them are making a difference quickly enough. We are very supportive of many of the governor's proposed actions this year, ending the lag payroll, salary withholding program, increasing mental health beds, expanding wage theft enforcement, and the plan to hire more than 12,000 staff by the end of this fiscal year. That's a lofty goal. And unfortunately, despite all the efforts that were discussed earlier, the state remains unable to attract and, more importantly, retain the staff it needs to deliver services. This is evidenced by the continued closure of group homes across the state at OPWDD, the proposed closings of state correctional facilities without a clear plan and in a quick fashion, the challenges around wage theft and enforcement responsibilities, and the fact that state employees have worked more than 22 million hours of overtime at a cost of $1.35 billion. According to Controller DiNapoli's report, the state lost more than 10,000 staff to attrition in 2022. That's a 41% increase over 2020. These are not retirement-related departures, so it's really critical that that's recognized. The million-dollar question is, how do we encourage people not only to join state service, but to stay? Getting new hires in the door is definitely improving in some agencies and in some areas. We still have rural challenges. We still have other areas and agencies that cannot hire. Keeping them, however, is not as easy. We hear from our members, they can earn more in the private sector. They can remote work. They get treated better. Our members are frustrated. Good example, our licensed social workers, our auditors. They are not being paid at a level that makes them want to stay. We have hundreds of vacancies. These are folks who take care of our most vulnerable and who enforce the state's tax laws. That's just one example. We have many, many others. Fortunately, there are a lot of solutions. Fixing Tier 6, that is important. We have many different ideas about that, and we believe there's sufficient money to do that if you look at how much we're spending in overtime. Increasing compensation. Studies are great. They take too long. People aren't going to wait for them. And while we appreciate the leadership at civil service, these salary reviews take way too long. We need to end abusive conduct in the workplace. I know it's an uncomfortable topic, but there's bullying going on. There's toxic workplaces. People are not going to stay in places. They don't feel appreciated. And I'm out of time, so that goes so fast.
We're going to start with Senator Jackson, chair for 10 minutes. Oh, no. Oh, we're a past government. You only get three minutes. And nobody gets a second round. Sorry about that.
First, let me thank you all for coming in. It's important to hear from you, the representative of the workforce in the state of New York, at least the majority of the workforce. So, Ed, you had mentioned you wanted to say something when your time is out. Please say it now, so everybody can hear you.
Certainly. I was going to mention, there are two issues in the testimony that are part of this year's executive budget that we want you to act upon. One has to do with the fact that Medicare primary enrollees in the Empire Plan lose access to a benefit for skilled nursing facilities upon turning age 65. The Empire Plan provides nothing. If you're under 65, you get 120 days. If you're over age 65, you get zero. You get the Medicare benefit, which is only 20 days. The second issue is what you had referred to earlier, which is the IRMA proposal. That has been around before. Thankfully, the legislature has been supportive and has rejected that in the past. And let me just say what the commissioner had said earlier. It is a federal requirement, what those brackets are, which you talked about. But it is in state law that it be reimbursed, and what the governor is proposing is to change state law.
Barbara, please tell me you wanted to say something before you got called off. You wanted to say something before you got called off by the machine, so please.
It's too long. I'll just reiterate what Ed is saying, that the IRMA reimbursement, we believe, should be maintained.
Right. I'm clear on that. That's why I asked the commissioner, how many retirees do we have in New York State? Because all of those will be impacted by it. So, let me turn to.
You have 500,000 and something.
Well, Randy, can you tell me, you want to finish what you were speaking about there?
Yeah, I mean, look.
Ed, can you turn off your mic, please? Barbara, can you turn off your mic? Thank you. Go ahead.
I mean, I think the reality is, we have to look at the employee experience, right? How people are being brought on is one part of it, but how they're treated once they get there is an important part. Under the former governor, they decentralized a lot of human services, business, payroll. People experience being at work differently than they used to. They can't get their problem solved. They can't get their questions answered. We need real turnaround on these issues for people when they come in because people get really frustrated within the first year that they're working because they don't have equipment. They're not being trained properly. They leave because they don't feel the support that they need, and that historically has not been the way we did business.
Joshua, the last 15 seconds. Go ahead. You have 13 seconds.
What do you want? I said all my, I said my piece.
You good?
I'm good.
All right. I just wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to finish up, and I'm finished also. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate you. We need you to be partners in this. Thank you.
Yes, Assemblymember Roth.
Thank you. Mr. Terry, so you guys represent the civilian employees of the prisons, correct?
Correct.
So, how many members is that?
I think it's roughly 3,000 to 4,000 statewide.
And you talked about earlier, you know, the impact that this abbreviated timeframe would have on them with the prison closures. Unfortunately, we've been through this a number of times before, so can you elaborate on the impact that this had on that membership when there's been a closure?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. When these facilities close, there is not always another facility close by, right, within a reasonable drive. And, you know, when you're suddenly looking at the option of keeping your job but driving 90 minutes, and this isn't a, you know, a New York City 90 minutes where you're going eight miles, maybe. This is through rugged terrain in the North Country or, you know, where it might be. I mean, that's a real drive, and that's a real impact. So, you're making some pretty hard decisions on whether you can continue in state service or not, based on that. And I mean, I think that puts an undue strain on our workforce, on their families getting pulled out of schools, moving to a new area. And I think just disregarding the one-year notice that was put in very intentionally by the legislature and a governor, and just ignoring it every time, I think is a disservice to everybody involved in this process.
And I thank you for that, because, you know, you just mentioned schools, like a perfect example of things. You know, if you're making this decision and you have, it's still not ideal, but, you know, you may have more of an opportunity to consider all of these different things a family needs to consider when making that type of decision. That may include moving closer to another facility. So, I think that three-month time period just is not sufficient for a family to have to, you know, deal with something like this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Kruger. My question's going to be for Randy. You know, we heard from the DOL about the significant need for investigators. In fact, the commissioner said that there are 500 open lines currently. What do you believe are the roadblocks? I know you talked a little bit about that during your testimony. But do you believe the open positions are being offered at a competitive-enough rate? And how would a dedicated funding stream for enforcement impact your workforce?
Well, no, I don't think that they're being paid at a competitive rate. And we know that DOL has been, this has been a slow bleed. You know, we have 21% less workers at the Department of Labor than we did 10 years ago. So, people leave, and they're not filling those positions. The impact on New Yorkers is huge. I think it's incredibly important, and I know that there's legislation that has been put forward to create a mechanism to fund the DOL by making sure we fine those bad actors, and we know not every employer is a bad actor, but making sure that those funds that are raised, those fines, are rededicated back to the Department of Labor to fund wage enforcement. It's not okay that New Yorkers are being treated badly, not getting paid, but it's also not okay to set up the wage inspectors to not be able to get the work done. And they're not being supported or funded or resourced right now to get that work done. And I think, you know, creating a mechanism to do that is going to be incredibly important moving forward.
Thank you to your union for working with me on that bill.
And thank you.
I think a lot of the other work that we need to do is around addressing workplace bullying. We know that our remote workers tend to feel more comfortable reporting the workplace bullying that they seem to be suffering. And I'm wondering if you guys have ideas about how we can better educate management about how to handle these situations.
Well, I think one of the things that happens is people are very fearful of retaliation. So, you know, when you report bullying and you're the one whose work site is moved, or you're the one whose job duties change, or you're the one whose schedules change, that puts a chilling effect on everyone else who might be thinking about talking about a problem in the workplace. So, if we're going to train, and everybody needs training, if we're going to train managers, it's also about how to respond in a way that's supportive. We know that there's investigation process, and everything is not, you know, one side, you know, is the whole truth and nothing but, you know, that things have to be looked into. But we have to be able to support workers coming forward and talking about the issues that make them want to leave the workforce. And bullying is one of those issues. We have members who come to work. They're scared. They cry. They're sick to their stomach. That's not okay. That is not somebody who's going to stay employed with the state of New York. They will go elsewhere.
Thank you.
Yes, Assemblymember Pfeffer-Armato.
Okay, I'm on. Okay. Good evening, I think it is. Mr. Terry, you alluded to it, talking about the modernization and the fee-waving pilot program we put in last year's budget, but, and you went over, and I'm sorry that you missed Taco Tuesday, and next year I would love to be invited. I get that. But what, are you finding these measures to have been effective in recruiting more employees to public service? Or just not, you know, just give some more detail into that.
Yeah, no, thank you, Assemblywoman, and thank you for, you know, your leadership on these issues last year. I think it's probably too early to say whether they're working. I mean, we have, there's a few things that we know are working. The hiring freeze is gone. Governor Hochul's lifted that. We know there are additional FTEs. Randy alluded to this, 12,000 additional in this budget. But it's bringing people in the door and making them stay. So, we're bringing, I think, bodies in, but we still have churn. We still have turnover in some of our positions, especially in direct care, of 25, 30, 35%. How do we keep them employed? How do we want them to come back? And I think part of that is looking at the benefit structure and looking at things like Tier 6 and creating an incentive and creating a career ladder for people to work through. You know, I think working on things like waiving the civil service exam fees has been great. The New York Help's program brought in 7,000 employees statewide. That is tremendous. We're very supportive of expanding it to local governments tomorrow as a temporary measure. Like, we are on board with doing all this. But, I mean, I think it's, you know, we've just started rolling out the advisories on the tests where we're notifying high schools and the BOSI's programs and the community-based organizations. I mean, I hope that we can see over the next year that this is really starting to bear fruit and that we can really see in both an increase in applicants, but also a steadying of the retention rate and/or a lowering or increasing of the higher.
And then it's what Randy said, you know, how do we retain them, right? Because we can get 1,000 in the door, but in that first year, if it's not working out, then they're out the door the same way, so we're only retaining a certain percentage. So, then where do you see the worst staffing shortages? So, where is that area that just? Either, jump in, anybody?
I mean, I think many of our agencies are really struggling with getting workers in. You know, as my colleague alluded to, the direct care workforce is definitely being hit the hardest. Our healthcare workforce, I mean, these are the things we notice the most because they affect the most New Yorkers. So, you know, the wait times, the waiting lists. I think our O-Agencies have really struggled. You know, with the onset of telehealth and telemed, many medical professionals can not only work elsewhere, they can get paid higher amounts of money. They can remote work. There's all sorts of other options that the state hasn't really pursued as much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Matarra.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much for everybody's testimony here today. And this is questions to CSEA, you know, Joshua and to Randy from PEF. I thank you so much for caring about all the hard work in men and women of labor to make sure that they receive a decent wage, a decent healthcare, and a decent pension. I don't know if you listened to me before asking the question to Commissioner Riordan about the unemployment rate that we have here in New York State, a 4.5% unemployment rate, which comes out to the 214,000 New Yorkers, taxpayers, that don't have jobs right now. What could you do, both the CSEA and PEF, to do to help? In other words, we need workers to help educate and to get our New Yorkers back to work. I am asking you, these are people that could have great paying jobs, have pensions. We need to make sure that we get our New Yorkers back to work, the taxpayers of New York, first. Is there anything that you guys could do to help with this?
No, Senator, I mean, it's a great question. I appreciate your, as a labor leader yourself, I appreciate your advocacy on this. We could take, we could probably take a whole district of unemployed people in New York State, in your district or anybody's district. We could get them to work in New York State tomorrow, for New York State government or a local government. I mean, there are that many vacancies that we have within our direct care titles, within, we have 911 dispatch all over the state, right? We can't keep caseworkers. There are jobs available. So, what we've been doing, and we've partnered with the Department of Civil Service, the Department of Labor, to do these job fairs to promote not just the jobs themselves, but the union benefits that you get with it. And I think when people start seeing, how do we connect, it's not just a job. I mean, this is your, this could be your career. This is your life going forward. Your health insurance, right? You get college benefits, you know, benefits for your family. And that's really important. So, I think we're trying to do a better job ourselves of connecting the dots from the jobs into the union benefits and then getting people in the door.
Great. And Randy, can you answer that also, too, please? Because I only got four. I have one more question.
I mean, everything Josh had, I 100% agree with. I think there's also something missing here as far as our outreach and what people know about public service. We sort of always accept, we expected people to always come into government work, and it used to be, civil service, get a good job.
I have 31 seconds. I organize the unorganized, good union-paying jobs, a decent wage, a decent healthcare, and a decent pension.
We got to teach our kids about this stuff.
Exactly, but guess what? That's what we need to do to make sure we get the Department of Labor, please, to help with this. Healthcare workers, they lost their jobs during COVID. How are they, were they taken care of? What happened with the situation? This is very, very important, that there's too many healthcare workers lost their jobs because of the COVID. They were there for our families. They were our heroes. Then they went to zeros, but they're always going to be our heroes. Would they get compensated in any way?
Can we talk about that offline? Because I think we could have a broader discussion about it.
Thank you.
We wouldn't mind if you actually answered to all of us in writing, so that all the members can see. So, if you send letters to Ways and Means and to Finance, we'll all share the information. Thank you. Okay, Assembly. Thank you. Okay, Assembly.
Yes, the next questioner is Assemblymember Di Stefano.
Thank you, Chair Bronson. Good evening, everyone. Randy Agus, I'll start with you. Starting salaries, I think that's been part of the problem over the years for every time we sat here and talked about that. Do you still believe that that's part of the problem in getting people to the workforce as far as public employment?
For many of our titles, we have many titles that have advanced degrees, that the private sector pays a lot more. The balance was the pension and the health benefits and all of those things. And as that has diminished, we can't, we cannot compete. I mean, a lot of our titles, our attorneys, engineers, you know, we really need to look at those salaries and raise them. They have not been looked at in many cases for decades.
Right, and that's kind of like where I was leading into is like, so what are we going to do to try and entice these people to come into the workforce as a public servant, as a politician?
Fix Tier 6.
Well, I was going to get to that. I was going to ask Josh that question, but I'll go with you. Josh, I was going to say, before we get to the Tier 6 issue, do you have any idea how many prisons have been closed in the last several years in the state?
I want to say there was over 20, but I, 24, yeah.
With the exception of a handful, a lot of them are still empty, just so you know.
Correct, yeah.
There's going to be a press conference tomorrow on the million-dollar state case to address that issue. But in Tier 6, and you know, anybody can answer this, we know what the issue is. We know what the problem is. We've been told that there's probably not going to be any fixes coming anytime soon. I don't believe that. I believe that the collaborative effort of everybody that has a part in this can do something to fix it. We've heard some of the scenarios. In your opinion, what do you think we could do to make this thing move along?
So, I mean, just to set the table, right, over 60% of our state and local government workforce now is in Tier 6. I mean, we are, we're over critical mass at this point. You know, I think we talked to every member here, we've talked to every member of the legislature, at least amongst the AFL Unions, and everybody is on board, right? Everybody knows the challenges, everybody has staff that are in Tier 6 and know the problems. So I think we need, we're going to keep elevating it, we're going to keep talking about it. I think, listen, hope springs eternal for me. I mean, I'm not going to give up on reforming Tier 6 this year. I think there's, where there's a will, there's a way, and I think we can try to get it done.
So we're dressing that way. So you know everybody up here is okay with it, you know that everybody talks yes, yes, yes. Where's the pushback?
Well, I think there are financial implications that we need to figure out.
And that's where we need to find the fixes. That's where I was asking if anybody had any ideas on what is necessary to fix it. I think gradual would be a good start, but who gets put in first, who gets put in last, that type of thing. But without your encouragement to the rest of us in here, you know, we keep pushing the envelope because as Senator Jackson, you know, Tier 6 sucks, and we all believe that. So thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Sorry, back to the Senate, Senator Chu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank all your members for their dedication on their career to serve and help to the public and ensuring our society and government can actually function and provide service to every family. However, I've been sitting here and listening to all of you are talking about how hard to, for the hiring, for the retaining. I read through the testimony, I'm going to dedicate the question to PEF, Randy. You mentioned that the state, we're short on about 11,000 on staffing, and we all aware these issues across the borough of our agency. So is there anything, I hear all the concerns, the Tier 6, the bullying, the safety, and all the issues, the salary. So what exactly can you tell us from your members? What would they say, the biggest challenge and hardship to keep them, to hire them?
I mean, I think, you know, our members would probably have a breadth of different answers for that, depending on where they work. But I think for most of them, it's pay, work-life balance, being able to have advancement opportunities, making sure they have a good retirement security. All of those things are what keep them coming in and what keep them staying. I think the frustration that many members will leave state services because of short staffing, they can't fulfill their mission. So like, I'm a social worker, we have nurses, they care deeply about the people they take care of, and it's incredibly frustrating when they don't have enough people and people are waiting for services or falling through the cracks by no fault of theirs, and they see diminishment in the care of the people they want to serve. And I think that is sort of the cyclical issue, that unless we figure out how to keep people and get them in the door, is going to keep happening because the morale is a major problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assembly. Oh, I'm sorry, you had 48 seconds left. Did you want to use them? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Assemblymember Giglio.
Yes, I want to thank you all for being here and for representing the people that you are the leaders of. It's very important. There are nurses on Long Island right now that are not reaching a contract. They're getting ready to strike, which will really, the hospital's one of the largest employers in Long Island. And they cannot reach a contractual agreement, which means that the patients are going to suffer. And the hospitals are really suffering as far as the payments from the state for Medicare, Medicaid, things of that nature, where most of the hospitals are operating in the red, as I'm sure you're aware. And so that's one of my questions about what you think that we can do to make the lives of the nurses and the doctors and the hospital workers, the janitors, the health aides that are there to make their lives better and the programs. I mean, we had a nurse that came into work, she was fine, and then she went up to the top floor and jumped off the hospital roof in Long Island a couple of years ago. And these are serious mental health issues that we are not only having as far as beds for the people that need, are in mental health crisis, but also for the workers that are short-staffed. And that's one of the conditions of the strike, is that they're short-staffed and they can't meet the needs of all of their people. So that, number one. And then, number two, with New York Helps and the 7,000 workers and the 7,000 positions that were filled, were there's New Yorkers or were those people brought in from out of state? And when they came on, did they come on as Tier 6? And were they promised? I mean, because we do need to fix Tier 6. That will solve all of our problems, but, you know, a couple, just a couple of those questions, if you could answer them, please.
So I'll answer the second question first on New York Helps. I mean, I can't tell you exactly who filled, out of those 7,000. Their tier status is based on their first date of hire in the public sector. So if they were hired previously in a different job before 2012, they could be Tier 5 or Tier 4.
Okay.
You know, it's my understanding, though, that those 7,000 are New Yorkers. Those are people that live here or, you know, maybe Pennsylvania or New Jersey, right? On the border, but they are, they are New Yorkers for the most part. And I will just say on, you know, we are in a vicious cycle in the healthcare system. We have lack of staff that creates mandatory overtime. People burn out and they leave, which creates more mandatory overtime, and we get into a cycle. What we need to do is to fix the workforce problem by training in the healthcare workforce. More people like to come in. We just need an influx, a massive influx, which is very hard to do. I mean, it is very hard to train that, like, a significant number of people to put a dent in it. But we are in a spiral here, and it is very hard to get out of it.
And I think that the teacher, the educators for the nurses are another problem in that you have to have a master's degree, you have to have your certifications, you have to have all of these criteria. And I think that there are a lot of nurses that are aging out that maybe don't want to work on the floor that could become teachers, and I think we need to move towards that also.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Mayer.
Thank you for being here and thank you for what you do. Two sort of areas I haven't heard addressed. One is, and Randy, you addressed this briefly, but it's important to me. Does the unions, the CSCA and PEF independently do outreach when new jobs are available? Or are we dependent on the employers doing the outreach? Because I agree with you, I think outreach is sort of a bit of an outdated concept, the way it's been done. So that's question one. Question two is, how successful are you working with the Civil Service Commission in actually creating new titles that are needed? Like in a library, for example, where a title is needed and the Civil Service Commission is too slow and too cumbersome to actually create a new title? Or there's someone ready to be hired, the money is there, but the title and the test is not there?
Okay, so I forgot the first question, we should get to the second.
Outreach, outreach.
Thank you. I'm like, wait a minute. Okay, so as far as outreach goes, it's kind of, it's dependent on which agencies. There are some agencies that work very well with their local leaders and invite them and include them and tell them when they're doing outreach. We think that's a great idea because being in a union is a benefit. And many people don't know that or understand that that's part of state government. Most times, we're not aware of it. The HR departments are doing the outreach. We are working with them on, you know, trying to do better at onboarding. But the actual fairs and all the advertisements and public, you know, outreach campaigns, a lot of those are being done by people with expertise in marketing. We know a lot of agencies that are basically entering contracts with firms that specialize in this and coming up with campaigns. And, you know, frankly, your workforce knows the job. So I would encourage agencies to work with us as much as possible because we can help recruit.
Yes, I agree.
So it's a great question, Senator. We are becoming, I think we realized there was a gap in what we weren't doing as a union, especially with the crisis that we're in. So we have definitely been more proactive in going to job fairs, promoting these jobs, promoting them internally amongst our membership and, quite frankly, our member, the family of our membership. Because that is, that's always been like the next generation of the civil service workforce. But we are without a doubt trying to be much more proactive than we have been in the past of not just leaving it to the state or a local government, but going out there to do it.
Just before I end up, do you have recruitment people that work for you? I've been at several job fairs where unions actually have recruitment people on their staff. Do you?
So we don't have recruitment staff. We use internal staff and our local, like, our union leadership within a local or a unit.
Okay.
And then, just to answer your last question, we have been working very closely with civil service. I'll say the relationship is really great there, the best it's been, I think, in decades. And so I can't speak to that specific example, but I think we're always, they're always willing to listen on that.
Thank you.
Yes, next up is Assemblymember Alvarez.
Okay, now. First, I'd like to thank you and the amazing unions, our organization, that you represent, many of which are my constituents, for your advocacy and on behalf of New Yorkers. I have a couple of questions. And one of the questions is, as a union leader and ambassador for the union's strong movement, what do you see as the greatest budgetary threat to workforce development? The second one is, how can we, as a legislator, invest in workplace protection and workforce development in a greater way? And how COLA, how the increase of COLA can possibly impact economic development in our communities?
So, I mean, I think the biggest budgetary threat to workforce development is something that we've gone through over the last 15 years, was which was just the abdication, the utter failure to make any investments in the workforce. I mean, we had a hiring freeze in New York State for the state, for the, for state employees for almost a decade. They weren't bringing in anybody. We couldn't hire people in our group homes and OPWDD, in our state psychiatric centers. And when that starts happening and people start seeing that there is no path for a promotion or there's no path even in, they're going to start looking elsewhere. And we have a changing, I mean, the workforce has changed. It's no longer the state or, you know, the public sector and, you know, the Carrier Corporation in Syracuse or Eastman Kodak in Rochester. We have the gig economy now. We have, you can work in any number of places. You can work where you want and when you want. And so the civil, the public sector is not, it's not the end-all, be-all anymore. We have to be able to compete, we have to be constantly making investments into that system.
And I'd just add, it's not just investments into the workers, it's investments into our infrastructure. Our physical buildings where people work are in many cases unsafe and they're falling apart. So you bring in, you want to bring in the best and the brightest, and they walk in and they're like, "I'm not working here." This is, you know, unhealthy environment for people. So it's really an overall, they stopped funding state services on a wholesale basis.
Well, thank you. I know I have 40 minutes, 40 seconds left. I'm going to yield back to you.
We have Senator Wyk.
Thank you so much. I just have, I have a real concern. What are some of the issues or costs you see if we take on an influx of migrants to the public service workforce?
Quite honestly, I don't see costs to our public sector workforce if that, if that happens. I mean, so CSCA will represent any employee that's in our bargaining unit, that's placed in our bargaining unit. Anybody, and the commissioner spoke about this, and I will, I am not a lawyer, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to litigate whether this is right or wrong, but anybody that is authorized to work in New York State, quite frankly, we would encourage them to join, to join the public sector workforce because we have such dire needs, as long as they are eligible to work here and meet the minimum qualifications. We spent over $1 billion in overtime last year alone. We, our members need relief. So I would encourage anybody in this room who has constituents that are unemployed to send them to the state, send them to a local government. If you could go work for OPWDD, you could apply tomorrow and probably be hired within a day or two because they are that short-staffed. So, you know, Senator, I understand the concern that's been expressed here, but I don't see a downside for people that are legally allowed to work in New York State working for, you know, New York State with proper checks and balances and.
So a migrant as a social worker, you're okay with that?
Well, if there were minimum qualifications that are met and they were able to pass a licensing exam and they were able to do that, and I mean, yeah, I mean, we're not in the business, that is not our business. That is, you set the policy on that, not us. We just represent the workers.
I'm just asking your opinion. You do represent the workers, and I'm sure some of the workers would have a problem with some of that.
I'm sure, I'm sure some of them absolutely would, yes.
Yeah.
But our members also have a big problem working mandatory overtime. They have problems working four shifts in a row in a group home.
Yeah, I agree with that. That is a problem.
Thank you. Oh, you have another 56 seconds, sorry.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Assembly.
Yes, I'll go questioning, this is probably a rhetorical question, it's for Randy and Josh. So I think, Randy, you used the phrase, "a lofty goal of hiring 12,000 more people," right? And you've, and you both explained job fair, sometimes union and agency, sometimes just union, sometimes just agency, but you're doing all these efforts. Is it reasonable to believe that we're going to hire that many people if we really don't fix Tier 6?
I think it's, A, no, I don't think it's reasonable to think we're going to hire that many people for a lot of reasons. Tier 6 is one of them. We have a very slow process to hire people. By the time they get information about a position, take an exam, get called back, I mean, by the time we reach out to people and offer a job, they found three other jobs. So we have problems with Tier 6, we have problems with compensation. We also have problems with the process itself. There's been a lot of improvements. You know, the Help Program to us is a temporary stopgap. It's not the answer to all our problems because, yes, we hired 7,000 people, but we lost, you know, 10,000. So, you know, we're not keeping up. There's not a big enough net gain. I think we'd have to really change and modernize our infrastructure on hiring to, some of the things that are, they're looking to do, but of course, it takes a while. Online, you know, doing things online, making sure we're responding to people more quickly, getting them, you know, in the door faster, that's a huge thing. I think the average is four months, and it's not only New York State. That's a national average, it takes four months to hire into a public service job. So that's just not going to work for people interested in working, they want a job tomorrow. And we have the job, so we should be able to do better at that.
Yeah, I mean, Assemblyman, I brought this up in an earlier question. I mean, the world of work has changed. And I think, you know, it's kind of built in. The state and local governments are not equipped to change that as quickly as the world around it is changing, at least in the world of work. And I think there has to be some serious thought that's put into, how often can people work from home if they're eligible? Do they have to come into an office? I think, so Tier 6 is without a doubt, I think, a big driver, but it's not the, it's not the only answer. I think there's a lot of other factors that we really need to be looking at. And Randy said it, speeding up the process of onboarding is important. You can be hired pretty much anywhere and start a day or two later if they, if you really want to, and then be paid within two weeks, write your first paycheck. The state just doesn't function like that. And we really, and I will give credit to civil service, they have been processing faster, but we need to find a. but we need to find a way to go even faster to, to get people on board.
All right. So you're not going to be able to answer this question, Randy? You and I have talked a lot about bullying at the Rochester Psychiatric Center.
Mm-hmm.
Could you get us that data on where it's happening so we can correct it? Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Senator Martins.
Thank you. Good evening. It is, it's, it's great to have you here, especially following the panel that was here beforehand, because what I heard from that panel was, everything's great. And then you came in and we have a billion dollars in overtime, and we have 17,000 people whose jobs haven't been replaced, and we have persons and inspectors at the Department of Labor that need to be hired in order to do inspections. And these are the, that's the information that we need in order to properly look at this budget. So, and before I get to that, Ed, question for you. I know you've been sitting there patiently for a while. You, you mentioned COLAs, and you mentioned the cost of COLAs to 23,000 retirees, and if we were to do the right thing by those workers who retired, state workers, how much would that cost? I'm sure you've calculated that, right?
We have. The bill was introduced last session, it cost 350 million, roughly. The same bill was introduced this session, it cost 1.4 billion, the same bill. So we requested a meeting with the Comptroller's Office to talk to the actuary because it was the exact same bill. And the actuary interpreted the language of the bill to mean the catch-up provision would apply to anyone who got a COLA over the last 23 years, including people who are dead. And so we pointed out that it was very clear, you only get the COLA if you are eligible to get the COLA, i.e., you are alive.
Correct. Thank you.
So, so the bill is, has been resubmitted for amendments to clarify that it only applies to live people, and therefore, the new aversion of the bill will have a lower fiscal-
350 million.
Yeah, but even if that is the true number, if you look at that within the context of the retirement system, it was 260 billion.
Ed, I don't disagree. I agree with you. 350. I'm going to work with Robert Jackson here and get it done. Josh, Randy, you know, four, four months to onboard somebody. All of these, these are, and correct me if I'm wrong, all of these open slots are actually in the budget. We are, we are not actually asking for money to hire new people. These are positions that have already been approved, they're in the budget, and they're available to people today.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay. 30 seconds. Josh, how do we, how do we, what would you do to fast-track and make this a week as opposed to four months?
Yeah, I mean, I think we really need to look at civil service in terms of, what are we testing for? What are we examining? And we've talked about this, are there ways to look at your past experiences in order to retain merit and fitness, but also show that somebody can do the job to get them on board faster?
Love it. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I think I'm the last legislator here. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. You weren't on the list. I am going to jump to Assemblywoman Joanne Simon.
Thank you. I've been trying to not ask questions for the sake of asking questions, so I appreciate it. So you just said something that is an area that I have, have long been concerned about, and that is, we test for everything. And we have no idea that these tests are valid. And so many of them are not valid for the job, for example, that is being sought with, and testing actually the skills and abilities that are needed because they end up being paper and pencil tests essentially, which disadvantages certain populations with less reading skills. It's different in certain professions than others. What would we need to do to counteract that, to make those assessments be more in line with the, the nature of the work that we're hiring people for in the state civil service
You know, I mean, I think it's, it's a big question, and I think it would be, in order to change that system, I think that's a long, it's a long process. I mean, I think, listen, I am from the Civil Service Employees Association. We believe in civil service, we believe in merit and fitness. But I, but I, I think we would be on the same page that merit and fitness is not always a test. And there's a good example. My neighbor, she took a civil service exam to become a graphic designer for the state of New York. And it was a paper and pencil test. It wasn't a review of her portfolio of the work she's done before. And then she, quite frankly, had to wait eight months in order to be hired into the state. I think there are things that we could look at, and like, in examples like that, that we can say, does this really make sense? But I, I think it would take some political will, and I, I think it would, it's a, it's a fine line of getting rid of merit and fitness and just putting in, you know, going, you know, going back to Tammany Hall-style cronies, and making, making sure the right people are coming into the, into the system.
But do you believe it's possible? I mean, I, I have a, a former client who was a massage therapy graduate from an associate's degree program, wasn't a civil service exam, it was a national exam, and persistently, even with accommodations for her disability, couldn't pass the corporate organization, the business organization of corporate tax questions on the massage therapy test. It makes you wonder, in a hands-on profession, why we're doing that, why we're asking for that.
Yeah.
And so I think that there probably is some, a whole lot of wiggle room there for improving the system.
It, it, it is possible, and we've done it in some agencies. Within OPWDD, at least for our direct care titles, our DSA's, there are, there's not a test, it's, it's more of a qualifications and a skills assessment to make sure that you are able to do the work. And that's what's, you're able to come into OPWDD now, and you're hired much more quickly because we've reevaluated, and they've worked with us. We want to be part of that process if we were to do it, but it, it is possible, Assemblywoman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman, and Josh and Randy. I know you've been on the, on the hot seat for a while, answering a bunch of questions. Sorry to add to that. Just to, to follow up on Senator Matarra's line of questioning. We, we seem to have a balancing in different interests. You know, you've indicated that we have 11,600 vacant positions in the state, that we're spending 1.36 billion dollars in, in overtime costs. We have a 4.5% unemployment rate in the state of New York. The Senator had asked about, about adding potentially 400,000 migrant workers into the workforce. Are you concerned at all about adding those workers into the workforce and potentially taking away employment opportunities from New Yorkers who are desperate for work?
Senator, I, I mean, I appreciate that question. Those jobs are open now. I mean, New Yorkers can come into these jobs tomorrow if they want to, and we encourage them to, and we are actively talking about these jobs and recruiting people into them. So again, I mean, I really, I encourage everybody to send people to the civil service website to have them talk to recruiters. I think what we're looking at is filling a gap that there's jobs that, apparently, these lower-wage jobs, their lower skill sets that New Yorkers don't want to fill. And I don't know why they don't want to fill them. I'm not sure about that.
Let me just hop in with another question, only because our time is limited. Are there things that the state should be doing to better let unemployed New Yorkers know that these jobs are about?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think we, we do a terrible job of promoting public sector work in New York State. I mean, you can, you see ads for Amazon, like working at an Amazon warehouse, or a Target, right? I mean, you see ads like that all the time. We've, haven't done a good job in the public sector on that. And legislation that was signed into law last year that you all passed requires the Department of Civil Service to better promote these exams to places that are going to be receptive. High schools, community colleges, universities, social service districts, you know, the list is, it's in law now. And that's being rolled out, and I think, I think we need to even go further. The marketing campaign that's going to come out, I think, will be helpful. But also just not bashing public service. Like, let's be proud of the work that we all do in, in all of these state agencies and local governments. I think it's easy to complain about the work and the, the pay and the benefits, but when you do that, nobody's coming, nobody's going to come and show up and work with you.
Let me hop in with one more question, the remaining 17 seconds, and we may have to go off-grid for the answer. You've mentioned a couple of things in terms of civil service that we would be able to do. Online testing, speeding up onboarding, just so we can accelerate hiring people. Are there additional items like flexibility in civil service titles where if somebody tests for one position, they may be able to be hired for something else? Are there other ideas that you have? So thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'm the last questioner, but I think I just more have, first of, thank you, but also because people seem to be obsessed with this issue, I just want to clarify it one more time. People can be in this country and have working papers allowing them to go to work. They can apply for jobs, as people, as you keep answering, successfully over and over again. It's not taking the job away from somebody else who wanted it. We want everybody to apply for civil service. We need these people to work. And also, if it's then determined at a later date that they are not eligible to stay in this country for some reason, then they paid into our systems, but they never get those benefits. And that's the history of immigrant labor, by the way, in this country. They disproportionately are paying taxes and paying into benefits that they can never get anyway. So they're actually making money for the rest of us who can draw down on the benefits and not taking the jobs away. And so I appreciate your continually answering this question, in my opinion, correctly, because there seems to be a great deal of confusion in this room about reality. I also do think it is very important, as you also, I think, all agree, that we start talking more about why government is where the best and the brightest ought to be going. Government is where people who care about other people go. Our government is something we should all be incredibly proud of and make sure that it works the best that it can for everyone. I know I talked to Mr. Hugh, the Commissioner, about reaching out also to older people. I have lots of people over 50 who actually got pushed out of the economy during the pandemic or because they were already over X age, and they're looking for work, and they want to work, and they have really good work histories, and they know how to deal with people, and they can pass these tests. So I'm also encouraging not just young people to recognize what a great opportunity this is, this is a pitch, I guess, not a question, but also for older New Yorkers who are looking for jobs and are still felt, still feel the private sector isn't really interested in them. But they can have amazing skills to walk into civil service, and we need to reach out to them as well. That was my speech, not a question, but I do want to thank all of you for your work, for your members' work, and for being with us here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm now moving to Panel B, New York Civil Liberties Union, A Better Balance, and the Center for Poverty and Social Policy at Columbia University. Let's see who has stuck it out this late to join us. Always, always. I have snacks if you need something. Okay?
Take, take a look.
Good evening, ladies. Okay, let's go in the order we called you in. For people who have the paperwork, it is not Alice Bohm, it is Ally Bohm, so I just want to make that correction for the record, from the New York Civil Liberties Union. Why don't you go first?
Thank you, and thank you all for sticking around. Updating New York's medical leave program is a gender and racial justice imperative. The U.S. faces a maternal health crisis that disproportionately impacts Black women. Under current law, pregnant people in New York simply cannot afford to take time off to keep themselves and their pregnancies healthy. The governor's TDI proposal is a good start. In addition to raising TDI's wage replacement rate and matching it to paid family leaves and adding job protection, protections against retaliation and the continuation of health insurance, the legislature should advance a more holistic proposal reflected in Senator Ramos's S. 2821B, A. 4053B, which is Assemblymember Salage's. The governor only proposes to raise TDI's wage replacement rate for the first 12 weeks of leave. For any subsequent weeks, the governor would cap the wage replacement rate at $280. The number of weeks in individual needs is based on medical need. While the vast majority of people will only need 12 weeks or less, those whose medical conditions prevent them from working for longer periods have no less need for sustainable wages on Week 13 than they did on Week 4. Moreover, New York must take this opportunity to fully modernize TDI. It must move to a progressive wage replacement model to increase low-income workers' access to leave and expand the definition of family to include chosen family, which is particularly important for LGBTQ New Yorkers who are often less likely to have a traditional nuclear family. And it should enable automatic conversion between paid family leave and TDI for a worker who experiences pregnancy or neonatal loss. While my written testimony includes more, I want to flag one more provision, and I'm sorry for talking a million miles a minute. The governor proposes to establish 40 hours of dedicated paid leave for prenatal visits. Prenatal care is integral to healthy pregnancies. Paid time off will enable more New Yorkers to access this care. However, the governor has proposed to shoehorn it into paid family leave. In addition to posing serious logistical hurdles for workers, locating prenatal leave within PFL could provoke serious unintended legal consequences that ultimately endanger pregnant people. Paid family leave is leave to take care of another person, whereas prenatal care is care for the pregnant person. Shoehorning prenatal care into paid family leave suggests that the fetus is a separate person from the pregnant person, which could have serious detrimental effects on the pregnant person's legal standing. Were the state to recognize the fetus as separate, its ability to control the pregnant person's life would be limitless. There is a disturbing trend of prosecutions of pregnant people for their behavior during pregnancy or their pregnancy outcomes in New York and around the country. These problems can be avoided by providing for prenatal leave through New York's paid leave program. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, for sticking around, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for inviting me to be here today. My name is Sheri LeWan, and I am co-president of A Better Balance, a national legal organization based in New York that led the fight for paid family leave in 2016 and works on paid family and medical leave laws around the country. I'm here to urge you to include in your budget desperately needed reforms to New York's medical leave program, known as TDI, that are included in Senate Bill S. 28, B. 21B, sponsored by Senator Ramos, thank you very much, and Assembly Bill sponsored by Assemblymember Salage. Governor Hockel's budget proposal also includes raising TDI benefits, which indicates how important the issue is, but her proposal does not go far enough. New Yorkers need a paid medical leave benefit they can survive on, and currently, New Yorkers who need time off to recover from cancer, a serious surgery, a pregnancy that requires bedrest, or any personal health need can receive no more than $170 per week due to a cap that was set back in 1989 and hasn't been touched since. New Yorkers who need to miss work to take care of their health cannot survive on that amount. On our hotline, we hear from workers who became food insecure, who even became homeless, and others who went, did not take the medical care they needed because they couldn't live on that $170 a week if they were out of work. It doesn't have to be that way. Most other states that have medical leave programs, paid family and medical leave programs, give more than $1,000 a week to people who are eligible for them. And even here in New York, our paid family leave program pays over $1,000 a week. So you can, so if your father breaks his leg, you can take care of him and get a decent benefit, but if you break your leg, you get $170 a week, and that makes it very, very difficult. In addition, how benefits are calculated is very important. Our bill includes progressive wage replacement, important for low-wage workers who can't live on a small fraction of their wages. Progressive wage replacement ensures that the benefit will be sufficient for all workers to meet their needs, even if they have a minimum wage job. We applaud the governor for proposing the increase in the benefit levels in TDI, but her proposal is not, is, is, goes too slowly. It is a phase in over five years. We've waited now since 1906, 1989 to have a raise in these benefit levels, and it's, the time is now to do it. So we urge you to, to, to take the, the bills that are, have been proposed by Senator Ramos and reform TDI benefits immediately effective January 1st, 2025. I also want to say that it's critical that job protection and continued health insurance be included in the TDI program. job protection and continued health insurance be included in the TDI program. It is in the paid family leave program, but not the TDI program. It's in our bill, but it's also in the governor's bill. And we would urge you to include that also in anything that's in your budget.
Thank you very much.
And next is Meredith Smolkin, from Social Policy. All right, super. Thanks so much for having me. I'm honored to submit testimony on behalf of the center and my colleagues discussing our recent analysis of the benefits and costs of paid family leave and the proposed expansions described by my colleagues here. We find that expanding eligibility to workers with only four consecutive weeks of work at a given employer and introducing a progressive multi-tier income replacement structure would increase accessibility and use of paid leave following birth by lower-income families at a critical time for child development. Importantly, our work shows how the benefit of an expansion would far outweigh the costs through long-term improvements in the health and future earnings of infants and the health of their parents. We recommend that these key elements should be included in the executive budget. A large body of research shows that paid family and medical leave policies benefit the health, well-being, and career trajectories of workers and their families. And our research uses this literature to estimate the present discounted value or the estimated future gains or losses in today's terms. We find that the net social benefits of $1,000 investment in leave are over 20 times the cost of the initial investment. Translating these estimates to the New York State Current Paid Family Leave Act, we find that the program results in social benefits of $12.7 billion for the state. However, without expansion, many of these gains may be left on the table. New York State became a leader on paid leave when it passed the most generous policy of its time in the United States. However, we know barriers remain. And in our analysis, we find that low-wage workers are less likely to use paid family leave following birth than their peers. And when they do, they use an average number of weeks, fewer, sorry, I lost my words, only using seven weeks despite being eligible for 12 weeks. The loss of at least one-third of wages following childbirth is substantial for these workers and may deter program participation. This shortcoming of the previous policy is illustrated by increases in low-income workers' take-up of paid leave during the phase-in, as we saw wage replacement rates rise. This would be addressed through the multi-tier income replacement structure. Our findings imply that low-wage workers cannot fully afford to benefit from the program, with implications for equity and limiting the full potential of the policy to create social benefits. We estimated that the proposed expansion would result in a net benefit to society of $2.3 billion. Given the high rate of return, the additional expenditures to ensure access by low-earning working families should be strongly considered for inclusion. Our analysis points to two conclusions. Low-earning workers are less able to fully benefit under the current policy, and that, given the high rates of return to paid family leave programs, the benefit would be significant. And thank you so much for your time, and we appreciate the opportunity to submit testimony and look forward to continuing to work with you and your efforts to support the working families of New York State.
Hey, thank you. Good evening. Thank you all for your advocacy and working with us to improve TDI. You know, it's always a wonder how we women, you know, we get pregnant and we're either disabled, you know, that we can't seem to fit under a category despite being more than half of the population. And you guys have made excellent points. Actually, my question to Ali was going to be about personhood, because that has been such a misclassified topic. But I would like to then touch upon something that I didn't, I don't think I heard, which was a part of our TDI update that would actually allow for the definition of chosen family to be included in paid family leave and how important that is for LGBTQ families and beyond. Can one or any of you speak to that? Thank you.
Yeah, let me, and I'm sure Ali can add too. We do work around the country, and we have been expanding family definition in most programs because the families that need these benefits don't come in one size. You know, we have immigrant families that have extended families where there's been care given, whether or not they're blood-related or not. LGBT families, there are many, many, many families who, even though marriage is now possible, there's still extended families that are older and are, don't really, the people who care for them are the people who are close to them, not necessarily people who are blood-related or even have a legal relationship. So what we want is to expand our family definition to meet the family definitions that we're using around the country. It does not expand the program significantly, but for the people for whom it is important, who want to take care of their loved ones, it's really essential. So we thank you for including that in your bill.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add any thoughts to that, or anyone who wants to speak to how progressive wage replacement is going to work, how important it is?
Yeah, I mean, on the progressive wage replacement, we really are out of step with the rest of the country on this, because it's been recognized in lots of studies that if you replace wages up, the first part of the benefit, the first part of your wage is a higher percentage, then low-wage workers are going to get a higher percentage of their income, and then that will be all we'll get. Higher-wage people will get a less percentage of their income over that. But it will mean that nobody loses on that. Everybody gets 90% of the first X amount. We have it at the statewide average weekly wage. But it could be, yes. So in any event, it's very important for low-wage workers to get a bigger percentage at the bottom.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Now, I was just speaking with Senator Ramos, and I can't for the life of me remember why, when we did paid family leave, we didn't include TDI. Because it just makes sense that if we're going to socialize the cost of people who are disabled, and we want them to be returned to the workforce and remain as whole as possible, I think we'd all agree that $170 dating back to 1989 just doesn't make sense. So can you talk to me about the economic benefit of somebody earning more during that period and their ability to reinvest that into the community and to spend that money on local stores and the like, and the multiplier effect that comes back from an economic development standpoint, making sure that people are made whole, especially when they are on disability?
Yeah, I think it's obvious that nobody can really live on $170 a week. And what's happened is, what really does happen, and we get calls on our hotline all the time, is that people can't spend that money, as you said. They can't, if they are trying to make it on that, they are really not paying for groceries. They're not doing anything else except the bare minimum in terms of their living. But mostly, people can't, they can't get the medical care they want because they end up continuing to work and becoming sick. And so that also is a cost to us as a society economically. But, you know, as we found with paid sick days, and there's lots of studies on this, people who get money when they're sick and when they can't work, they invest it back in the community and spend the money. And it's a win-win both for business and for the people who are getting the benefits.
And you don't have people who are returning to work because they can't afford to take the disability time to actually make themselves well, correct?
That's correct.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. I yield back my 52 seconds, Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Hanging out throughout the afternoon, appreciate it. And our last panel will be the Business Council of New York State, ALINE, the Alliance for Greater New York, the Worker Justice Center of New York, and Number 14 had to rush to a train. So it'll just be the three organizations. Or whoever's left.
I don't see, I don't see Theodore.
Okay. Well, here come more. Okay. Good evening. Hi. Okay. Great. So Crystal Griffin is here? Griffith, sorry. You're Crystal Griffith, okay. And you are Theodore, and you are, so we'll just go in that order, if that's okay. Thank you for being with us to the near end of the event. Hi, please. You have to press the button hard until it turns green. It's a test.
Okay, there we go. Well, good evening, Chairwoman and distinguished members of the Senate and Assembly. My name is Crystal Griffith, and I'm the Director of Workforce Development at the Business Council of New York State. We are the largest business association representing local chambers and over 3,500 members, 70% of which are small businesses. We at the Business Council strongly believe and know that workforce development is an economic development concern and issue. And we support budgets, investments, and proposals to improve in our workforce. With that, we must remain a competitive state with a skilled workforce like no other. Continuing to highlight in skills training even more, according to the World Economic Forum in their most recent report, by 2025, 50% of the employees currently in the workforce are going to need some type of reskilling or upskilling. And of that, 50%, 40% of those are going to need skilling that takes six months or less. And that's by 2025, so just next year. So we have to do something about this now. As far as manufacturing workforce investments in New York, we understand that they're crucial for the revitalization of our state's industrial sector, and we support those proposals that have been put forth, such as for the Fast New York Investments and for OnRamp also. We continue to support addressing skills gaps to ensure the workforce is equipped with the technical expertise they need to advance in manufacturing environments, especially given that there are over 400,000 manufacturer workers in New York State alone. Unfortunately, we still do have fewer individuals today than we did in February 2022 during the pandemic. When we look at recent data from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, we know that there are 8.8 million open jobs and 6.3 million unemployed people. Now, that does not include individuals who have decided to stop looking for work. There are some individuals who no longer desire to be in the workforce because they've decided to either live off of one income, or they've, you know, been able to save because of the pandemic, and so they've retired early. And they haven't wanted to come back to the workforce. So we look forward to budget investments and proposals that are going to encourage those individuals to come back and fill the 2.5 million jobs that would still be open if every unemployed person still filled one of the open jobs that we have. As I shared before, 70% of our membership are small businesses, and they have workforce concerns just as much as big businesses do. One of the biggest being unemployment insurance, and I know that's been spoken about a lot today. It has been over 1,100 days without action on unemployment insurance, and it's hurting them. I'd like to end with this in my last 30 seconds. At the end of the day, no matter what we do, small businesses, big businesses, what you guys do, we have to ensure that we are making opportunities that are attainable to the workforce, to people that want to be in the workforce, that are accessible. And we have to make sure that individuals are aware of the opportunities that they have. As you all heard, there are so many positions open, and the requirements for them are continuing to change. But if people aren't aware of the opportunities we're providing with them, then we're not really doing the best with those opportunities that are there. So, right on time. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions for my written testimony.
Good evening. My name is Theodore Moore. I'm the Executive Director of ALINE, the Alliance for a Greater New York. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here as a leader of two statewide coalitions for fighting for better conditions for our state's workers. Last year, the Raise Up New York Coalition fought extremely hard to get workers a raise, as the cost of living has really skyrocketed all across the state. Now, the minimum wage will increase to $17 for downstate and $16 for the rest of the state by 2026, indexed to the cost of living after that. But several provisions of the law will actually harm workers trying to make ends meet. We can't pay upstate workers less when costs are, you know, up from Rochester through the Hudson Valley, just like they are downstate. The Upstate Parity and Minimum Wage Act would establish a statewide minimum wage of $17 by 2026, so that $17 is the floor for all workers. The current law also has a harmful loophole that denies workers cost-of-living raises when unemployment goes up. If triggered in 2027, nearly 2 million workers would lose out on a raise. New York was once a leader, the first state to set $15 minimum wage. But here, we're an outlier among 19 states that index the minimum wage to inflation. The Upstate Parity and Minimum Wage Protection Act would eliminate this loophole. We encourage everyone to support this legislation and prioritize it in this year's budget. But obviously, paying workers fairly just isn't enough. We must keep them safe on the job as well. New York is facing a worker injury crisis. New York's Department of Labor projects that the warehouse industry will grow faster than any other state between, has grown faster between any other state between 2018 and 2028. At the same time, warehouse workers are injured four times more than the average New York worker. ALINE supports the Warehouse Worker Injury Reduction Act to reduce the warehouses, to ensure that warehouse workers are designed for worker safety. Just 15 minutes from where we are currently, Amazon's ALB-1 Distribution Center in Skodeck, New York, it's one of Amazon's biggest warehouses in the state, nearly 1,000 full-time employees. It's also one of the most dangerous in the entire state, with one in five workers getting injured every year. With the rise of e-commerce, warehouses are being designed for profit and to get products out quickly, not for human bodies. And workers are paying the price. The Warehouse Worker Injury Reduction Act would require warehouses to be designed for safety first, with annual evaluations by ergonomic experts to identify hazards. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for staying late. My name is Emma Crecci. I'm the Director of Advocacy Outreach and Education at the Worker Justice Center of New York. We're a nonprofit legal services and advocacy organization that serves low-wage workers throughout a very large portion of New York State, including the Hudson Valley, all the way up to the North Country and out to Buffalo. We serve the state's most vulnerable workers. We're talking about farmworkers, day laborers, landscapers, hospitality and restaurant workers, and others, you know, people whose essential labor really sustains our local economies but are too often left unprotected from workplace exploitation and abuse. So what we are seeing is that workers are struggling to make ends meet, often working multiple jobs with limited access to safety net resources, and are also facing very significant barriers to addressing labor law violations when they occur. So today, I want to talk about three, very briefly, talk about three legislative proposals that should be incorporated into the budget that address the interrelated issues of wages, safety net protections, and labor law enforcement. And I also want to register our strong opposition to the proposed limits on liquidated damages for frequency of pay violations that have already been discussed this evening. And if you want to ask me questions about that, I can elaborate on our position. So the first bill I want to mention is the Upstate Parity and Minimum Wage Protection Act, which Theo has already spoken on it. You know, as it stands, New York's minimum wage will be lower in inflation-adjusted dollars in 2026 than it was in 2019. And this bifurcated minimum wage structure fails upstate workers in particular by keeping wages well below the statewide living wage of $21 an hour. So the very least we can do is raise the floor to $17 an hour statewide by 2026, as this bill does. We also must eliminate those loopholes that would deny our most vulnerable minimum wage workers a raise if there is even a slight, I'm talking 0.5% uptick in our historically low unemployment rate. So we need to address those wage freeze threats urgently. Secondly, I want to advocate for passage of the Unemployment Bridge Program. This is a bill that would provide unemployment protections to an estimated 750,000 workers who are currently excluded from traditional UI, including freelancers, self-employed workers, undocumented folks, and certain cash economy workers. We're talking about people earning under 56K, so really, our most vulnerable workers, again. This is a capped appropriation at $500 million. It's revenue neutral because we have the digital ad tax incorporated into the bill. We know there are a whole host of issues related to UI that we have to address. This is a parallel program, does not rely on employer tax. Lastly, I have five seconds. I want to advocate for the
"a perpetual presumption of retaliation." We passed the bill, and now it's been in effect for about half of a year. What kind of spike have your members who are covered by the law seen in frivolous lawsuits?
That's a great question, and off the bat, I'm going to tell you that is a question for our HR Director, Frank Kirbin, who handles, who handles those situations for my members. So I'm going to be very honest, I don't have that answer.
Well, let me elaborate a little more so that you can relate to him.
But the one I do know right now, we haven't heard anything currently on a lawsuit on that.
In fact, Amazon increased their employment footprint in New York, California, and Washington, all states with similar quota regulation legislation. In 2023, after the law was enacted, throwing doubt on the anxiety that Amazon would be dissuaded from investing in states that stand up for their workers. So I would ask that you relay to your colleague who heads up the HR Division, that perhaps legislating, or opposing legislation that keeps workers safe is not so bad for business after all. Theo, I'm wondering from you if you can go into greater detail on the potential impact the minimum wage indexing off-ramps might have on New York's low-wage workforce. Who makes up the workforce, and what kind of sectors are they in?
So the workforce is primarily women of color. All across the state, they're, you know, working in retail, they're working in hospitality, and really, it's, because it comes at times when there might be a potential economic downturn, it actually would have a reverse impact because those would be the workers who would most need an increase in their wages. Quite frankly, would take away from potential economic upturn because those workers, once again, would be spending that extra money in their neighborhoods, putting that money back into the economy. So it actually, you know, would potentially have the reverse effect that they think it would have.
Emily, do you think that in solving this wage disparity issue, upstate versus downstate, do you think that there would be a significant pump in upstate's economy as a result of this legislation?
I think what we know from the fight for 15, what we know historically, is that when wages go up, so does consumer spending, and that fuels economic growth, right? That is a well-established pattern. So yes, I do. You know, this is not, this is, we're talking about a floor, right? You cannot live on $16 an hour in upstate New York, in a dignified fashion. You cannot live like that. So that is precisely, is that for me?
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
So first of all, thank you for highlighting the Upstate Parity and Minimum Wage Act, and highlighting the importance of dealing with the disparity from upstate and downstate, and also highlighting that the off-ramp is very problematic, especially for, you know, folks who are in certain industries and oftentimes people of color. So I look forward to working with you on that. We did have a great step forward with getting it indexed. You may or may not know, you know, through the years, and I started this minimum wage battle in 2004, the Assembly always requested indexing, but we could never get it through. And finally, we got that. So that's a, that's a really good step forward, but it's not enough. And your point about every time we have raised the minimum wage, the economy has benefited because low-wage earners immediately go out and spend it, and so they are consumers who are putting it right back into the economy. So no questions, I just look forward to working with you on that, as well as the Warehouse Safety Act, and we'll go forward with the Senator on both of those bills. I look forward to doing that. Question for you, though, Crystal. In workforce development, we know, I mean, we always, when I was Chair of Economic Development, heard from every employer, "I can't find skilled workers." So you have workforce development, job training, skills training, career education, all of that combined to get workers the skills they need to take jobs. My question for you and the Business Council is, what efforts are you doing to make sure your outreach is connecting marginalized communities and individuals who have been on the economic sidelines for far too long?
Thank you for that. So for us, it's, especially in my role, like, we do a great job at connecting those individuals and people who are working with them, with groups or businesses that's doing that work. So for example, right here, our Capital Region Workforce Development Board, we talk to them all the time, we work with them, they're doing the underground work with people who need help, who need to get into training programs to get into jobs. Also, there are workforce development boards all around the state, the state ones, there are also smaller ones. We work to say, "Our businesses are doing this." We send out information that's not just limited to our members via email, we do webinars, we invite people to connect with each other, we have events that connect those people. So we're working directly with our workforce development board, we work with higher education institutions, we also have PTEC, where we work to help students get into those roles to directly, you know, help schools, work with businesses. So we're doing that connector work, and we think that's one of the things that we do some of our best work in also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Ramos.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pick up on that last question as well, Crystal. You know, workforce development, the economy has changed, frankly, over the last 10, 20, 30 years, where skill sets that were important back then aren't important today and other skill sets are. Can you tell me, in your experience, the importance of the business community working with our government, community colleges? Not everything requires a two- or four-year degree, certificate programs, or apprenticeship programs, through so many of our building trade that's out there. How do we connect people and skill sets to jobs?
By making sure we're identifying what the actual skill sets are for those jobs. So we work closely with the U.S. Chamber, too, and that's something, just last week, we had a conversation on them, where we do feel that some jobs need to, make sure that we're identifying what the actual requirements are for jobs. So for example, some jobs might say you have to have a license to be in this role, but really, what they're asking for you to have is some type of photo ID to show. So you might not need to drive at all. So now, we need to redefine and make sure we have the correct requirements for jobs, so that people aren't misguided, so that they aren't turned away, or, you know, fear, "Hey, I'm not qualified for this job." It's important also for the connection between the higher education institutions and businesses to be working together, because the higher education institutions, not only are they working with students, but they work with the community also. A lot of higher education students, they have community programs. You mentioned certificate programs, there are also micro credentialing programs that institutions have that work directly with the businesses to say, "These are the exact skills that they need to work with them on attaining those skills." Some of those micro credentials you can earn in, a lot of them also, you are hired on the job, and they'll train you. Businesses that want to do the training, they just want the loyal workforce, and when you come to them, they'll do the training for you, they're open to doing the training. And we've also seen an increase in that, where businesses are taking on the responsibility of doing the training themselves and reevaluating, you know, what experience a person has and saying, "Hey, where can we best fit you?" Or, "What experience do you have, and what can we train you in so that we can get you into a role with us?"
Thank you. Chair, that's all I have. Thank you.
Assembly.
Yes, Assemblymember Gugliel.
Yes, so thank you all for being here. Crystal, I have a question for you. So all these manufacturing jobs where they are seeking workers, do you think that if the state gave tax credits for manufacturers to provide childcare on-site, that that would help fill those positions, number one? And then, Theo, for you, I am curious about the training and OSHA certifications that may or may not be happening in a warehouse setting, but I feel are very important, even if it's only an OSHA 10 course, so to let people know what the harms are in working in that environment. So I just want to get both of your feelings on those things.
So childcare, yes, yes, yes. Childcare is always going to be a priority. It's a workforce issue, and that's why we've advocated behind childcare so much, because we recognize that it is childcare issue. Do I think that if the state were to implement investments into helping manufacturers be able to provide childcare to their, to their workers, do I think it'll be taken, people will be able to use it? Yes. Do I think that manufacturing businesses will say, "Hey, there's an opportunity, at least let's give it a shot and see where it goes?" Yes, no one's going to just turn that down and, you know, not utilize it or take advantage of the opportunity. So I do think so, yes.
Yeah, because they'd be taking away manufacturing space to provide the childcare, so, but they would also provide the training for good employment and higher wages in the manufacturing industry.
Yes, and in a lot of manufacturing spaces, you're coming outside and you're getting trained regardless. I know you asked about what skill someone have or requirements, but a lot of these, almost all manufacturing businesses are doing their trainings at any level that you're coming in, there's some type of training for you.
Yeah, every manufacturer that I see on Long Island is saying, "We're hiring, we'll train."
They do it for you, yes, correct. At every, at every level, too, within their company, so that you can have growth, because like I said, they want, they want people to stay. So we're going to train you as you go, so you can grow throughout our company also.
Yep, and there aren't enough women in the manufacturing plants, so I think it would bring more women into the field.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, Theo, please.
So one thing about the legislations, that the act would actually provide better worker training, improved onsite medical care, and consistent safety standards across the industry. A lot of times, we do see, you know, injuries because of the pace of warehouses, but a lot of times, it's simply because of the jobs that people have that have them in certain positions, standing, you know, all day, hunched over, you know, the multiple, you know, the movements that they're making that actually leads to a lot of the injuries. So there are provisions in the, in the law that, you know, once again, would have those ergonomics experts really evaluating the situation on a yearly basis to improve those conditions as well.
Yeah, I would love to see some of those conditions, if you have something written up. I think we would all like to see that, yes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And thank you also.
Thank you. The last senator, last legislator?
Okay, thank you all for your time tonight. For the Business Council, so you gave the numbers about the number of unemployed, the number of job openings, et cetera, et cetera. So can I infer that the Business Council membership actually doesn't have a problem with people without U.S. citizenship applying for jobs and working for them?
So I would not say that's for to infer. And we've talked to our membership about this, our businesses, they want to be able for migrant workers to eventually join their workforce, but they are going to make sure that they need to be legally able to work. Our businesses are not going to put themselves at risk, where now, they're held accountable because they have someone who was not legally able to work, working for them, in all industries, right? Not just in manufacturing, in all of the business that we represent. So businesses are open to this, to this, and to welcome this population in this community, but, I mean, as you all know, on a federal level, there's a lot that needs to happen. So once individuals are legally able to work, businesses are open to that.
Which is exactly what the state of New York was saying in their responses if they come to apply for civil service jobs.
Right.
The other two representatives, I gather, you also don't have a problem with people applying for jobs that they are legally eligible to apply for and working in your communities or in the areas that you specialize in?
That's the American Dream. Oh. That's the American Dream, right? Yes, of course.
I always thought so.
I mean, even before the recent wave of migration, newcomers, asylum seekers, immigrants have not only been bolstering and holding down multiple industries across the state, quite frankly, they've been maintaining the population of our state. So they are responsible for maintaining industry and really, communities, and really are a vital part to, you know, large sections of our state, you know? Think about Western New York and what it would be without its immigrant population. Think about, you know, what our farming industry would be in Central New York without our immigrant population. Quite frankly, you know, the economic stability of this state really depends on, you know, quite frankly, our immigrant population and our black and brown population, and we really have to respect that and give them their due.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to thank you all for your time with us tonight. Appreciate your hanging out to the end. Thank you, all the legislators who have hung out with us through the end of the hearing. I'm going to officially say that this hearing is completed, but if you want to come back here tomorrow morning at 9:30, we get to start all over again with a new set of topics with Human Services. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Get home safe. Thank you.